Good evening and welcome to the June 13, 2017, meeting of the Sumamish City Council. This is a study session. And let's see, first is public comment. Do we have a sheet with public comment?
Hello, my name is Mary Victor and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Sumamish. Let's study Curitiba, Brazil. It was transformed into an environmentally friendly laboratory for urban planning, not because of where it's located, but because of what they did. And their secret is we had to work faster to avoid our own bureaucracy. There was a gentleman named Jamie Lerner, and in the old days, the new lanes for traffic and roads were going to take down historic buildings, they were going to be demolished, and a new viaduct would be linked with the Central Square to ease traffic concession. But Jamie Lerner and his team came in and said, no, they were leading a new movement, and because they were starting to lose their history and their identity, he says. He was first a planner and then the mayor, and he developed a radically different concept. They wanted to work, move, live, and live in leisure, and plan for everything together. Most cities separate urban functions by income and age in South America, but Curitiba was the first city in its first decisions that brought everything together. And Curitiba has thus become a gold standard in sustainability for urban planning, known variously as the Green Capital and the most innovative city in the world. Originally, when there was huge amounts of growth, they wanted to move toward order and make extra room for the automobile, so they were looking at a new master plan called the Curitiba of Tomorrow. But they couldn't get the input and have it done. So Lerner and his team of architects came in and they determined, they turned the tide, and they started at exactly the right time. And had they waited 10 or 15 years more, it would have been too late for Curitiba. When he became mayor, the first thing he did was he changed an automobile thoroughfare into a pedestrian mall. The merchants were originally protesting, but it was done almost overnight, and they loved the results and demonstrated the effect, and their businesses flourished, so they wanted more. The second thing that he did is he introduced a new street design that provided express lanes for buses. Passengers would board from new stations along the medians of the city's main streets so that buses could move uninterrupted through the city. Lerner was and remains a major advocate for surface transport and is critical of subway projects. He says, if you want creativity, cut one zero from the budget. If you want sustainability, cut two zeros. And with his new bus transit scheme, public ridership grew steadily. Buses became both the cheapest and fastest mode of transport. Lerner and his planners were not satisfied, however, and he observed that the inflow and outflow of passengers was dragging the speed of the bus at each station. So they came up with three more innovations. A new system of raised platforms, which were futuristic tube stations that allow passengers and wheelchairs, including disabled people, to move straight from the station onto the bus without the hassle of stairs. They also, secondly, added longer buses to add capacity to the system, and third, a prepayment system so bus drivers did not have to issue tickets or collect money on the go. The impact was marked. Roughly 85% of Curitiba uses the Bus Rapid Transit system. He said it's about creating a complete network. We are transporting 2 million each day while London Subway carries 3 million. His pride in this system is clear. What we started now 300 cities around the world are using. For Lerner and his team, the social implications of the city were all important. We realized people were taking such a long time to get to the city center, so the idea was to incorporate the essential features of a subway system. And in doing that, people coming from the periphery were spending 20 to 25 minutes less per journey. I've only read part of this article. I did have a DVD to show you a five-minute clip from, but that's not supported by the technology here, so I do have it available if you'd like to see it now or sometime later. And I just wanted to email the article. I hope you will find Curitiba, Brazil article worth reading to review, study, and use for either our city or the transportation you might be talking about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I believe he came to Seattle some years ago, didn't he? Right.
It's one of the happiest cities in the world. Happiness doesn't go up with income, it goes up by actions and what you get to choose to do.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to address the council? I'm seeing none. Public comment is closed. Madam Deputy City Manager, the first is Presentation One, Center City, Sound Transit Metro and the City of Seattle.
Sorry, I'm over here doing blinds. I'd like to introduce Cheryl Paston, our Deputy Director of Public Works, and she will introduce our guest speakers this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Deputy City Manager. Thank you for allowing us to come and give you a presentation on this One Center City project. With me tonight is representatives from Sound Transit, Seattle Department of Transportation, and King County Metro. I'll let them introduce themselves. They do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I'm sure they probably welcome questions as they move through the presentation. So with that, I'll let them start, and again, I'll let them introduce themselves. Thank you.
I'm Candida Lorenzana with the City of Seattle.
I'm Bill Bryant with King County Metro. I'm the manager of the Service Development Section at King County Metro. That includes route planning, bus stop planning, scheduling, and some other functions as well.
I'm Wesley King. I'm the Transit Expansion Program Manager for Sound Transit.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna pull up the presentation here real quick. Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. It's great to be out here. I'm gonna kick off things and talk a little bit about One Center City from the perspective of the goals of the plan and why it is needed. So One Center City is much bigger than the City of Seattle. It includes Sound Transit, King County Metro, and the Downtown Seattle Association. We're all partners in an effort to develop a 20-year action plan for how we move through, how people move through, connect, and experience Seattle's Center City. This is an integrated plan, thinking about a lot of different modes, thinking about pedestrians, thinking about public realm, so how the spaces are used by the public, how people connect from uses on the street to retail frontages, restaurants, and the like. Also talking about, a little bit about, street design and trying to identify how we use our streets in Seattle's Center City. So the big picture here is, as I said, is it's a 20-year action plan. So we're thinking about 20 years from now, what can things look like? How will people be getting around their neighborhoods? Will people continue to be using cars? What about automated vehicles? What other options will there be for transit service in addition to buses? Might there be other ways that we can provide high-capacity service to communities? And of course, you can see the picture of drones, so how are we going to do urban goods delivery? How are you gonna get your Amazon packages, your UPS packages throughout the region? The other part of this, obviously, is public spaces. And how are we going to make them more livable? How do we attract people into the Center City who want to be there and experience it? How do we prove upon sustainability within the Center City as well? So you're probably asking yourself, why is this important? Every day, we have thousands of people traveling into Seattle Center City and also out of. Obviously, with major employers like Microsoft and Costco out on this side of the water, we have folks coming out, trying to get out of the Center City to those jobs. We have people coming in the Center City to get to jobs in First Hill, which has a lot of major medical institutions, South Lake Union, our major technology hub, and also just the commercial core, people trying to access social services and government functions in the central core. The big takeaway here, though, too, is we have a lot of growth. We have growth throughout our region, and, you know, it's an enviable number, amount of growth that we're seeing. And it doesn't apply just to Seattle Center City. I know that we're seeing it on the east side, on the south side, just throughout our region. We're attracting a lot of people every day.
Does 250,000 include the I-5 traffic?
Yes. So it includes, it's basically people traveling or commuting, however they're getting there into the Center City or out of.
But it's the through I-5 also from south to north without stopping?
I don't think it actually includes that through of I-5.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I thought there was another question, so I was pausing for a moment. The big picture here, though, is that with all these people we have coming, we need to figure out a way to keep them moving around the region. And part of that solution is thinking about how we get more people to use transit and light rail and other options to move throughout our region. So that's one of the major things we're thinking about as part of this plan. I am not familiar with the exact detail of that number. I can clarify that for you afterwards, but...
We can double-check that for you. I believe that that excludes through traffic on I-5, but it does include bus, people who ride buses all the way through downtown. We'll get back to you with that information.
Okay, thank you. So what are we talking about when we talk about the Seattle Center City? We're talking about 10 of the densest neighborhoods in Seattle. As I mentioned before, we have people coming from throughout the region into First Hill, into South Lake Union, to access jobs and services. We also, it's also a major transportation hub, so we have transit, light rail, ferries, port functions that are going, that are going on down in the Center City. And it's also home to a big chunk of jobs, so 250,000 jobs. And many of those jobs, those jobs only account for 10% of the region's employment, but they do account for 20% of King County's employment overall. So it is a significant portion. And as I highlighted before, we're also, like, this area, if you've been downtown lately, is experiencing a lot of growth. I mean, just being out in South Lake Union, the number of buildings going up, the amount of construction going on, there's a lot happening. And a lot of it is making it more challenging to travel into the Center City. So with that being said, I'd like to highlight that while we have a 20-year vision, we definitely have some challenges coming up over the next several years. So many of those challenges include buses coming out of the tunnel and onto surface streets. We have East Link construction that is ongoing. We have 520 construction that will be happening over the next, in the next several years. We also have the Alaskan Way Viaduct, which will be a big change for Seattle's waterfront and how people are traveling through downtown, particularly to access industrial areas. In addition to that, North Gate Link also opening in 2021. And of course, in 2023, we have Linwood and East Link planning to open. So we have a lot of challenges in addition to the private construction that's expected and the Convention Center addition that is currently planned.
So just to kind of summarize this, and this is one of the reasons Sound Transit was really interested in being a partner in this project, is that, as you can see, there's so many projects occurring downtown. Some of them are driven by Sound Transit, some are driven by city growth, and many of them are gonna put a constraint on the ability to access and move through downtown. And we want to ensure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that transit is a priority and mobility remains a priority downtown while we're getting through this period of maximum constraint. Because, and I don't believe this was done intentionally, but as you can see, as it goes across this graph, it kind of goes from a bluer shade to red where we're getting more of these projects in their peak development period. And then it's getting a little lighter as we continue on. And when North Gate opens, that's when some of our buses come down, come out of downtown. That's when Metro has opportunities to truncate some service up in that area. And when we see the real relief is in Linwood and East Link opening in 2023, where we're then truncating a lot of service and we're feeding light rail. And that's gonna provide some relief to the Center City at that point. I want to point out, and I'm sure you're hearing a lot about the Convention Center expansion and that being a driver behind this. It definitely is one of the drivers, but whether that slides or not, we're setting everything up, or service changes and things that are being proposed, so that if that construction date moves, we can move the implementation of those plans as well. And there isn't a ton of float there where Sound Transit wouldn't need to have buses removed from the tunnel anyways, because there's work that's occurring for the East Link tie-in. We refer to them as the D2 ramps, but they're the dedicated ramps that come off of I-90 and go directly into the tunnel now. Those need to close in September of 2018 anyway. And then the East Link construction has to do tie-ins to the main line or Central Link now. All of that work needs to be completed before we can open to North Gate in 2021, because the last thing we want to do is open a new line to North Gate, bring new riders on, provide better transit service in some of these areas because of the reinvestment of ours, and then turn around and have to disrupt that service because we're still making construction tie-ins to an East Link project that's coming just two years later. And next slide, please. So when we started looking at the impact of all these projects, this is what happens if we do nothing. So essentially, you're gonna see a decrease in your PM peak travel times on Second Avenue, on Fourth Avenue. It's up to 3.5 minutes per afternoon commute, and that results in passenger delay, passenger inconvenience, lesser, lesser space for bikes, delivery services that are downtown, transportation network companies like Lyft, Uber. All of these things begin to come, become constrained. And then that also increases our costs to operate and move folks through downtown. And is there anything you wanted to add, Candida?
No, I think you did a good job of capturing, but it means no action. So what we're trying to do, recognizing that this is a pretty major challenge, is look at a couple of different areas that we could implement over the next few years, particularly in Seattle's Center City, to figure out how we can address some of these challenges. So this is a little bit of an introductory slide. We do have an advisory group for our effort, and these are the guiding principles they've made come up with. And we use these in our technical work to think about what the impacts are on a broader scale. So thinking about what, what changes mean for safety, what they mean for equity, for user experience, how they are, how they are for environmental stewardships. Are we doing things to keep the city sustainable, keep our region sustainable? These are the factors that they're considering and that staff are considering in their work.
What are the three on the bottom?
Yeah, Candida. Sorry, I'm having trouble figuring out how to make this work a little bit better. Got it.
That's better. Change it 100%.
Just a little off. Sorry, it's a little touchy. The three at the bottom are flexibility, optimization, and transportation.
Question for you, before we move on. The 37-member advisory group, what's the geographic representation on that?
That is an excellent question that I'm actually gonna get to momentarily if you wanna hold on.
Okay, I'll hold fire.
So that's an excellent segue into this slide. Who have we heard from? We have been doing some outreach to elected officials like yourselves. We've been out to Issaquah, going to Lake Forest Park. We've been to Sound Cities Association. We've also been at the Regional Transit Committee, are a couple that I can think of off the top of my head. The advisory group is obviously a key component of that. Over half of those participants have a regional perspective in that they are living or working outside of Seattle. So they're bringing in the experience of what it is like to travel outside to maybe an employer in Bellevue or Issaquah, the east side, or the south side, even to the airport, or bringing in a perspective of, you know, I'm commuting into the Seattle Center City from somewhere else in the region. We've also done a number of public outreach events, mostly focused on...
I have one more question. Kathy?
Go ahead.
Maybe one or two. When did this project start? When were these people brought together to start their conversation?
They started their work in September of last year.
Okay. I serve on the Regional Transit Committee, and Bill was at the meeting that we were at when we heard our presentation. And to say that people were shocked is sort of an understatement. It was the first time that anybody had heard about it. I think the council, possibly some of the city representatives had heard. Our county council member had heard something briefly but hadn't had time to look into it, didn't realize it was this important. The question was asked, who is representing the suburbs since it's the Seattle Chamber of Commerce? And the response was that Jim Stanton, who is a community outreach person in, from Microsoft. He wasn't aware of this process either, because I spoke to him shortly after that.
Just Jim Stanton?
Yeah. So I think the concern that I want to express is the fact that we were not aware of it. The individual who gave the presentation spoke about one thing that's not on here, which is the closure of the Bellevue Transit Center at the very same time. So to say that the impact on the east side suburbs is major is somewhat of an understatement. And certainly, the folks that live in the north and the folks that live in the south that represent those communities from the Regional Transit Center, or the Regional Transit Committee, were equally surprised and are wondering why we can't at least delay the Convention Center. And I think there's gonna be an active movement to try to convince Dow to at least delay that for one year, because that seems to be the tipping point for a lot of our buses, because with the sale of the Convention Center and the rebuild, you can't have the buses turn around. So that's the reason the buses can't go in the tunnel, as it was explained to us. So I'm, when you talk about reaching out, the reaching out was done after the decision was made, and there's no opportunity to make any changes. So that's not really reaching out or getting people as part of the community to make those responses. It's gonna be very difficult for us to get into the city with, when we don't have the Bellevue Transit Center. We're foreseeing that the auto traffic is gonna increase significantly just because of that, because there aren't places to park and get a bus.
Let's hear the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
So this is briefly covering some of the things we've heard from folks, including our advisory group, that safety is a priority. Focusing on people first is key. How do we move more people? Obviously, we need to think about, as Councilmember Huckabee pointed out, the effects on the regional transportation system, what else is going on in the system that could be affecting people's ability to travel throughout the region and into Seattle Center City. Things like, how do we improve transfer environments? If we're gonna have more people going from buses to light rail, how do we make that a better experience for, for them? And how do we make it a better experience for all users that are traveling? And I'll let Wesley talk a little bit about some of the near-term projects that we are considering.
Sure. I would say one of the biggest challenges in looking at the impacts of all these projects is trying to figure out, okay, how do we keep people moving downtown without creating another project that is gonna create the same types of impacts? So we're having to be, balance the, the level of involvement we want when it comes to construction improvements, because the last thing we want to do is create more delays. So some of the things we're looking at where we sound, found great benefit, we're making signaling improvements through downtown. You've probably experienced when you're heading northbound on Fourth Avenue, there's a lot of people that are trying to make right turns to get to I-5, especially during the PM peak. It can create a lot of delays because there's pedestrians crossing those streets as well. So the cars can't turn right. That backs up our buses that are also traveling north, because the bus lanes that are dedicated are right there as well. So some of the things we're looking at are improving the signalization on both Fourth Avenue and Second Avenue to allow for what we're, it's essentially a leading or lagging left turn, which allows pedestrians to be held while traffic gets a green arrow essentially and can clear through the intersection. And then it will release buses and single occupancy vehicles traveling northbound. It's an area where we found that we can find a really great improvement. Another thing that I think we were all kind of surprised by was that if we convert Sixth Avenue to two-way, it provides a lot of relief from congestion on Fifth Avenue as well. So there were some scenarios we had looked at early on, like adding a dedicated bus lane southbound on Fifth Avenue. We looked at two-way transit only on Fifth Avenue. That was one of those things that probably will be, remain on the table as a long-term project, but the timing of trying to do something like that this early wouldn't line up well. But perhaps as ST3 projects come online, it's something that's revisited again. And it, through those projects, is where we saw that that Sixth Avenue two-way was an opportunity. And even though those projects are no longer on the table, we see a benefit in moving this one forward as well. We're also exploring north and south and east and west protected bicycle facilities. So Candida knows much more, better than I, about the east and west protected bicycle facilities, but there's a Pike Pine Corridor project that's going on that's city-led, that's looking at some dedicated bike lanes there. We're also looking at Seventh and Eighth Avenue, as well as Fourth and Fifth, trying to balance, you know, what is capacity for transit and SOVs and additional bike improvements. We're really trying to look at multimodal opportunities across the table, but keeping in mind that these transit improvements and reliability need to remain a priority.
Can I just add something? I just wanted to emphasize that for those of you who don't regularly travel to downtown Seattle, I can see how a lot of this might seem very conceptual, and it might even be hard to picture some of the growth that's occurring in downtown Seattle. But folks travel from all throughout King County and really the three-county area. Metro runs most of those buses. Sound Transit runs a significant number of buses as well. But those are bringing people from this area and from everywhere else to downtown Seattle to work. About 45% or more of downtown Seattle workers in this larger, this is, this Center City area is a much larger area than what we've traditionally thought of as downtown Seattle. Goes all the way from Broadway to, to the water and from Mercer Street down to Jackson or so, thereabouts. And, you know, that's a very high share of people who take transit. And the share that commutes from Sumamish to that area is probably slightly lower, just due to the sheer distance. You're, you're gonna tend to get a few more drivers and carpoolers for those long distances, but it's still very significant. So that's, I just wanted to put out there that that's really a consideration for, for this council, is the importance of that. And I was chatting briefly with Councilmember Keller before this meeting, and the time it takes to get from many east side neighborhoods to downtown Seattle is, on a bus, is actually less than it takes to get from many Seattle neighborhoods to downtown Seattle by bus. Sound Transit and Metro are just really trying to, and STAD are really trying to just maintain the marketability of those services so people want to keep taking the bus, and so we can keep operating the bus at a reasonable cost.
That's a good point. And to, to bring back some of that regional perspective here as well, is the reason I've used Fourth Avenue as the example is that, as was mentioned, when the Convention Center closes and buses can no longer use it, routes like the 550 would then use Fourth Avenue. So the importance of the flow of that corridor is very important to Sound Transit. There's potential that the 554 could be on, on that. closes and buses can no longer use it, routes like the 550 would then use Fourth Avenue. So the importance of the flow of that corridor is very important to Sound Transit. There's potential that the 554 could be on that route, on that street as well. So that's why the importance of travel through there is being looked at very closely.
Don, can I ask a question?
Sure.
We had heard also that at some point in time, that people leaving Sumamish or Redmond or something, anyplace else, that they would no longer be able to take the bus all the way into the city, that they would have to transfer someplace, either in the International District or on the north end at, actually at the university, and take East Lincoln. When is that transition going to take place?
So I'm glad you brought that up. We are going to talk about that a little bit more, but I'll address some of that now. There is, and there were conceptual ideas that came out of this early on. Sound Transit and Metro are exploring some of those. So what you've probably heard about are the 520 service corridor adjustment process that's going on right now. Our recommendation would be that we have Sound Transit and Metro and the people responsible for that project come back and brief you. But essentially, they're looking at efficiencies across that entire corridor, which would also include opportunities to serve potentially South Lake Union better, get better midday and evening service through that corridor, and, yes, you're correct, provide a transfer to light rail at the University of Washington. On the south side of that was, 550 truncation was floated as an option in the International District Station, truncation or forcing a transfer there. That option's off the table. We looked at it closely, and some of it gets back to your comment previously about the impacts on the Bellevue Transit Center, the new parking rides on the east side due to East Link construction. We feel like the passengers that are utilizing those routes now are already feeling enough pain from construction, so we don't want to hit them with a transfer penalty as well.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know.
So Wesley, the, when the Northgate link is completed, can you get on at Northgate and not get off until you're at Microsoft, or do you have to transfer downtown on the light rail?
For, that bus service would be looked at. It would perhaps have a transfer, but that'll be service adjustments that are looked at probably in the year prior to Northgate opening.
No, I mean, once it's open, on the light rail, if you get on at Northgate and go through the university downtown, does it then continue across I-90, or do you have to transfer?
So when, that'll be in 2023. So that's when Linwood would be open and Bellevue as well. There'll be two lines there. One of, and I think we're going through a process within the next couple of years where we'll start talking about these as a red or a green or a yellow or a blue line. But essentially, we'll have a line that's a color, let's say blue. That one will run from, at 2023, it'll still be Angle Lake to Linwood. And then there'll be another route that runs from Linwood to the Redmond Technology Center.
I see.
So in 2023, depending which one you get on, you would have to transfer, but you will have the option of having a one-seat ride at that time.
So someone from Sumamish going to the university then would hop on, well, drive to a park-and-ride lot, hop on a bus, take the bus to, if they're lucky, to Bellevue, get on light rail, take light rail downtown. If they're on the right light rail, it'll stay on until they get to the university.
Yeah. And hopefully, at that time, they'll just drive to one of the light rail park-and-rides or take the bus to the park-and-ride rail and then have a one-seat ride. It would take you down through downtown and up to the university. Or we're looking at busing options that would also still give you a one-seat ride to the university across 520. But those are, Sound Transit's going through a comprehensive operations analysis later this year. Our service planning team is going to kind of go out and kind of, not necessarily tear up the service we have now, but say, hey, in 2021, we're going to have light rail here. We're, in 2023, we're going to have light rail to these points, and in 2024, it's going to expand to these points. What do you want your bus service to look like? And they'll be coming to the communities and working through any service adjustments and laying out what those travel patterns might look like then.
Good. Other questions? Nope. Are you through with the presentation?
No, sorry. I think we still have quite a bit more.
Oh, okay.
You can jump in, that was a service discussion.
We can try and speed up a little bit quicker, but these are some of the improvements we're looking at as well, and kind of with the comments made about Curitiba. We're looking at some outdoor boarding to speed up Third Avenue. We want to, much like the rapid ride does downtown, people pay before they get on. That can help speed up corridors. So we're looking at that downtown on Third, as well as out at the University of Washington, to try and improve the loading for some of those buses that may be truncated in those locations. And then we're also looking at just bus stop improvements. We want to make sure that people are comfortable and have a good transfer environment in those areas.
I'll just really quickly touch on this and get into the transit restructure discussion. But obviously, in concert with the other things we're considering, is we need to think about, what are ways that we can get more transit service, transit passes into people's hands, working with employers, working with smaller employers, not just within the city but throughout the region? How do we make that a more viable option for folks who need to travel? The other thing we're thinking about is how can we better manage parking downtown? What are the opportunities for that? How do we get information, like the picture that's shown here, that shows people that there's open spaces available where they can park, so they're, you know, not circling blocks so much anymore and creating some congestion there by looking for a parking spot? And of course, one of the other big important pieces of this is urban goods delivery. So how do we keep our key goods delivery folks with access to the downtown area, being able to make deliveries to restaurants, UPS trucks who need to make deliveries for goods? How do we manage, balance all of these things with what we have going on? Now let Bill talk a little bit about the transit service side of this.
So we've talked briefly about the restructuring of transit service and what's the system going to look like when, as the link lines come online. Thinking back to March of 2016, so it's been a little bit over a year, we've had a significant amount of experience since then, operating a system that was revised really significantly around the Husky Stadium station area for Link. Initially, that process was to include SR520 routes. Metro at the time, Metro and Sound Transit decided at that time that that was just going to be too much when combined with numerous routes within Seattle and to North King County and sort of the northwest part of King County and the 522 corridor and elsewhere. We were already looking at a very, very big set of changes to the system. But the purpose remained to make the best use possible of the huge Link investment, to provide riders with a more reliable experience and to provide them with a more convenient experience by offering more frequent trips on the bus side of the network. The Link, light rail, light rail by its very nature tends to operate more often than your average bus line. So what we really wanted to do was match frequencies as closely as possible between the bus system and the light rail system. Did not make a lot of sense to continue to run as many buses from the U District area to downtown as it did before Link opened. So we wanted to, as we were asking people to switch from their bus in the morning, for example, headed towards downtown Seattle to the new light rail system, we just wanted to make that work as well as possible. So we are now looking at doing that for the SR520 family of routes, not all the routes that cross SR520, but most of those routes. The results have been very good with the initial restructure. It's actually not the first time that Metro and Sound Transit have done this. We did it to a lesser extent when the airport line first opened up in 2009. And the ridership results there were good as well, but this was a much more sweeping set of changes. I think as each new light rail station opens, or at least each new segment of light rail opens, we'll be back out in various communities with Sound Transit, talking about how to make the whole system work better together and how to increase ridership. So as the chart shows here, what we saw, what we've seen over the last year in the U District area, and really in a fairly broad part of Seattle, is that overall transit ridership is way up. And most of that is, actually, all of, well, most of the increase is on Link. We lost a few bus riders. We gained a fair number of new bus riders, we think. The overall transit ridership, though, really needs to be counted as the system, so that's bus plus rail. And as expected, it's up, although I think even we were a little pleasantly surprised by how much ridership was actually up. So I'd be glad, I know that's quite a bit, and this is the kind of thing that tends to more directly affect riders, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
I want to better understand the overall plus 12%, but how much did the number of jobs grow in that same timeframe?
Right. Right. So what's, that's an excellent question, and another way to look at it would be, what happened with the rest of the bus system and the rail system that was not affected by this? I couldn't tell you right now how much job growth occurred, but there was definitely some. But it's another step to try to translate that into what should have been the transit, or would have been the transit growth without this. So the system as a whole during that period, I want to say, well, I know the metro side grew in the area of, depending on when you split the year, because we tend to go by calendar years, but I'm going to guess in about the 4% range, maybe lower. What we saw here, or what we've seen, we have a little bit fresher data since this came out, but bus ridership is only off about 2% as of now versus before, yet the light rail ridership is astronomical with, you know, at least 30, 35,000 new riders per day.
I think I'd just add that, you ask a very good question. What we're really trying to display here is typically when you open a new light rail line and you start forcing transfers, you see a drop in ridership. And we were able to successfully, you know, do a good truncation, have good outreach, have good community involvement, and we've actually increased ridership on this line. So it's just kind of showing that this is the hope and the direction we move forward in, which really goes to the integration of kind of our long-range planning efforts as well, and what Metro connects can bring as more light rail opens and we expand these connections throughout communities.
Kathy?
Have you ever thought of contacting the private carriers and seeing how many passengers they're carrying as well, so we get a true picture of transit? Because what we see here on the east side is the connector, Google, Amazon, Costco. Costco has a very significant van pool program. They feel they're forced into it because there isn't access to transit. So that, to me, is saying that our transit system isn't working as efficiently or as well as it could because there isn't enough of it. And we all know that out of, in Sumamish, most of the buses go out, standing room only, and there's only so much capacity. So how do we get our hands around this? And how do we keep people interested in riding? And how do we increase that ridership when the service, and no fault of your own, but the fact that the roads are getting more impacted, the fact that there are going to be more transfers? I'm having a little difficulty seeing the success in that. Plus, I am, since I've worked downtown for many years, I still have my hairdressers down there. We go to the Symphony Opera and all the rest of that. And I'm hearing more conversation amongst people that are doing those things that they're no longer going to go. My hairdresser is very concerned that a lot of the people that he's, his normal customers are going to be leaving. We hear at the Symphony and others that people are not as willing to sign up for tickets because it just takes too darn long and it's too unpredictable to get there. So is it just pain that we're going to have to carry until someday, maybe it gets fixed?
I mean, I'll take the first crack at that. I honestly believe part of it is just the growing pains we're going through right now.
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Yes, sorry. I honestly believe part of that is the growing pains we're going through right now. And when we do have these new light rail lines opening, it will allow for a lot more investment in the services that now have to make the haul all the way downtown. They can be redeployed into the communities that will provide more connections just throughout the communities and to light rail. It's not necessarily just an effort to feed light rail. It's about having more buses, more service hours focused on the east side, to the north, to the south, everywhere that we continue to expand and allow those opportunities. I would also add that the service planning team, when they come back and can talk to you about the 520 project and the restructure that's going on there, I know they're working closely with Microsoft on this effort, but I'm not sure about which other private partners have been involved, so I will leave that for them.
I think Google and Amazon are primarily on the south end, aren't they? They're picking people up at the Sumamish.
So I would add also that, I think your last set of points around the people, the fact that people are starting to realize that it's getting more difficult to get to the downtown Seattle area, that really speaks to the overall need for this project, which as Candida and Wesley said at the beginning, is really geared to keeping things moving downtown, not just for transit but for all road users. Another excellent question about the private shuttles. So we do communicate with those operators. Many of them, if not all, are a little reluctant to release their ridership figures. Metro has a, has an interesting relationship, and a positive relationship, I would say, with those companies that operate private shuttles. We do look to them to fill gaps, to fill connections that we don't make. We are proud that a lot of the employees that are being recruited by these companies really see good transportation as a perk. That's a main reason for the, for these private operations, is that they can provide a level of luxury that we never will be able to with very nice seats and Wi-Fi and a quiet atmosphere and nonstop service. So we do coordinate, I would say, with Microsoft and others, and we purposely don't directly duplicate routes in almost all cases. I do think that we carry far more riders, enough that their contribution would be, it'd be statistically significant, but it wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a large percentage of people crossing the lake. I'd love to see that ridership data, though.
Tom?
Bill, I think you may recall that I spent a good deal of my life as a transportation planner in a different mode, specifically 18 years as an airline network planner. And I look at this and I say, Lake Washington has just become an ocean for people on the east side. The time involved to get from here to downtown by public transportation is probably going to go north, in some cases significantly, depending on the number of changes that have to be made and the routing's involved. I think what we're looking at here, if we do pull all the direct service from the east side, not just from Sumamish, but from Woodinville and other places, Issaquah, to the heart of the Seattle, Seattle Center, we're going to see a movement by a lot of people, and I agree with Kathy, I think a lot of people are just going to quit going downtown. If I were the head of the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, I would be really pleased, because I think you're going to see people taking a second look at whether or not they really want to locate in Lake Union or Soto or wherever down there, and perhaps come east. I could be wrong, but frankly, this is one of the knock-on effects I see of stuff here, at least until you get East Link rail all the way out to downtown Redmond and all the way to downtown Issaquah. And that is years in the future. So I'm not sure that at least in the next 20 years, this is a net gain for those of us who live on this side of the lake. I'd like your response to that.
Well, I think we might already be seeing some of that, where there's, there's some significant new commercial activity taking place on the east side and kind of slated for the east side. You know, I don't know what else to comment on directly regarding that. I agree with you that, I agree with most of your points. I think that light rail will be a game changer. And the reason that it's going to be a game changer is because it's going to have a level of priority over other traffic that we've never been able to achieve for buses. Even the, even the cleanest, most clear bus lane is not going to be as clean as a completely- a completely separated rail right-of-way, or bus right-of-way, but that's, that's not an option for these corridors at this point. So when light rail starts up and as the system expands, it's, it's going to relieve a lot of that kind of back pressure. I will add also to something that Wesley said earlier, which, which is the fact that these link extensions are also going to reduce the number of buses that are coming downtown that now make those trips. And I would add to that by saying that that will make room for more buses from other places to go downtown. We don't see any reduction in the number of buses that are going to be headed to downtown Seattle. But add more relevant to this group, I would say that as the east side stations open up for link, you will see some changes similar, or we'll be out proposing and talking about options. There are always going to be options. We're never going to come out and say, this is, you know, this is the only way to do it. We're always going to start with options, because there always are a lot of options. But you'll see options that increase the frequency of, and the coverage of the metro system on the east side of the lake significantly. In Simamish and Issaquah and Kirkland, all throughout the entire east side, will be able to run shorter bus routes that run much more often than they do today. And so as the east side continues to flourish, we'll have, we'll have a transit system to match that, and light rail's going to help us get there.
Again, as you get to the mature stage of this, I can see what you're saying happening. It's the 20-year process of getting there, where it becomes a lot more inconvenient than it is today for the transit rider going from here to downtown and back. The longer you make the trip, the longer and more inconvenient you make the trip, the, there is an exponential falloff in traffic. Believe me, I've proven it in my former life empirically.
Bus traffic maybe, not auto traffic, which will step up.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about.
Okay. How are we doing now?
We're done.
You can be done.
Bill, I have a question for you. When do you perceive metro going to driverless electric buses?
That is another great question. There's been nothing but great questions here tonight. So right now, our focus is on the impacts of autonomous vehicles on overall traffic patterns, on, you know, street design. Because it will have, you know, if we say we read, seems to be a likely scenario that we'll be seeing AVs on the street within five to 10 years in large numbers. That's our conventional thinking at this point. So we're really trying, we're, metro's at the forefront. This is a huge topic in the transportation industry. On the transit side, metro's at the forefront of that. And we're really looking at what that's going to mean for bus reliability and for our bus lane needs, transit signal priority needs, and that sort of thing. There, there's definitely potential for autonomous technology to benefit transit operations, though, more directly. I don't see a scenario right now where we don't at least have a conductor-type function aboard every coach. So I'll just leave it at that. And suffice, suffice it to say that the opportunities are really, appear to be.
Because you are talking about 20-year plan, so.
Right. Right, and that's going to mean big change.
Candida, in your earlier slide, you had the autonomous vehicles and you had the drones as for new technologies coming out and how that can be incorporated. In the early iterations, there was a lot of criticism with Sound Transit, that there were no, what people were calling off-ramps, every five or 10 years to look at how to incorporate that technology. Has that now changed, or is Sound Transit and Metro going to look at incorporating them in?
I'm going to let you guys answer that question.
So I think it's something, we also, with ST3, had an innovation program, so these sorts of things will always kind of be in the forefront.
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Yes. We, in ST3, we also had an innovation program. So I think these are the types of thing that program was set up for. So there will always be some sort of group within Sound Transit that's focusing on these type of innovations. One thing that we have been looking at with ST3 is the possibility of what we can do with our rail system when it comes to autonomy. And I believe that's something that we'll continue to analyze. As you are probably aware, you know, we run at-grade in some locations, so that presents some challenges. Typically, we would probably end up in a situation similar to autonomous buses, where we would still need a driver in the vehicle, but we'll continue to look at those things as our projects progress.
When you mentioned rail, are you talking about existing rails or also where past rails existed?
It would just be looking at the entire system in areas where it could be implemented.
Okay. Seeing the Kirkland corridor, that's why it brings it to mind. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much, all three of you, and exciting times ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and interest.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Deputy City Manager, next is a discussion on land acquisition strategy and policy.
It looks like we have a little transition here. I will be introducing Angie Fesser, our Parks and Recreation Director, tonight. And we have a big group for the presentation, so I will hand it over to Angie to make further introductions.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to go ahead and get started while they get settled in. I have a few words I want to say for my introduction, so if we time it just right, it should work out really well. So good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, and fellow staff. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed selection criteria of the land acquisition program for the council's review and discussion. I wanted to share a few highlights before turning it over to the group. Late last year, the council directed staff to develop a more systematic approach for evaluation and selection of potential property acquisitions. A consultant was hired, and this project has been diligently worked on for the past six months. The land acquisition priorities reviewed tonight were established based on research of programs from other jurisdictions, review of the city's plans and goals and objectives, and a robust public engagement process, including a virtual town hall, statistically valid survey, two public meetings, with a third tomorrow night, a focus group, plus numerous Parks and Recreation Commission meetings and council meetings, and a joint meeting as well. Tonight's presented selection criteria is reflective of the community's priorities developed from these activities and work. In addition, I'd also like to share that there are benefits to formalizing this landscape, the land acquisition process. For example, it is a far more effective use of city resources. Initial screening of a potential property can take 20 to 30 hours of staff time prior to being vetted with the council to initiate acquisition activities. This evaluation process, which is now becoming standardized, is essentially the same steps staff would perform to initially evaluate a parcel. Also, this evaluation process creates transparency with the public in how parcels are considered for acquisition. During the presentation tonight, you're going to be asked for feedback on the specific criteria. The associated point values are not included tonight, as we want the attention focused on making sure the criteria is reflective of the community and the council's land acquisition vision. These points will be shared in the draft, which will be presented to the council on July 11th. But each criteria is assigned points ranging from 2 to 10 and are weighted based on established priorities. As you will see, after the step-one initial screening, the evaluation process is based on accumulation of points by meeting various criteria. Think of it as though a property basically starts at zero, and then as it goes through the process, it accumulates points as it meets the various criteria. The more criteria that it satisfies, the more points it scores. And this will create groups of prioritized projects, which are ranked high, medium, and low, with our focus being on the high-ranking properties. So these are a few of the highlights I wanted to share for your consideration before I hand it over the mic. So in addition, I have a couple of quick introductions. First is Anjuli Meyer, the project lead and our resident rock star on this project. And we all know Hank Klein and Cheryl Wagner, the Chair and Vice Chair for the Parks Recreation Commission. And they are going to be contributing the commission's comments tonight as well. And last but not least, Chad Weiser from OTAC, who will be leading tonight's presentation.
Chad, take it away.
Thank you, Angie, and thank you, members of the council, for having us here again. We're looking forward to presenting our progress, where we're at. Just had an opportunity last week, Anjuli presented to the Parks Commission, and we'll talk a little bit about their feedback as well. But we wanted to sort of remind you where we started. This all goes back to the significant amount of money that was allocated for land acquisition, and the desire to create some balance between development and preservation of property for public use within the community, and really to start establishing a proactive policy to try to get ahead of kind of chasing the development, I guess is the way you might describe it. First phase was to develop the strategy and then the policy and procedures of how to implement, and then following on would actually be pursuit of acquisitions. The components of the study, we've been through the existing conditions analysis, we did the statistically valid survey, as well as virtual town hall, been having public meetings, and now we're presenting the analysis of the needs that we, we found that the public spoke about, and defining criteria to help focus, and I guess, focus the staff's attention and on the list of properties that best fit the community needs. And then ultimately, we roll this all into an implementation policy that we will present to you in July. And then as part of that, we will also have a preliminary list of confidential properties for consideration. So in summary, out of the public survey which was presented to you previously, the results of that, the high-ranking priorities under the three categories that we asked the public to speak to us about were playgrounds, athletic fields, and waterfront recreation in the active-use category; in passive, trails and wildlife viewing, with trails being the highest category response throughout the entire survey; and in preservation, preserving tree canopy being the second highest overall, and then also linking streams, wildlife corridors, and preserving wetlands and sensitive areas. So what we've done is tried to take that information and then boil it down into kind of an evaluation process that the staff can use as opportunities might arise, so that then they can share specific opportunities with the council. Tonight, we'll talk about that process and specifically the steps in the process, as well as some other things we've discussed that would be follow-on activities. So let's talk about process. There's a few slides to discuss this, but Angie kind of discussed or mentioned this to some degree, and I'll try to walk you through our thinking. So as an example, as part of the site nomination form that was put on the city's website, there have been a lot, a lot of public interest and a lot of nominations of properties that have come in, which totals well over 100 opportunities out there. And so, as was described by Angie, it takes a lot of energy and effort of the staff to really dig in deep to the, into those. But we're trying to define a more effective kind of checklist and evaluation process to start funneling down to the highest priority properties that fit best with the criteria that we're defining that's linked to the public's desires. So this initial review and evaluation that we're describing, as Angie said, you start with zero, and we have some evaluation criteria will show you that a property or candidate property would gain points if it fulfills certain criteria. And it doesn't have to have points on every single criteria to, to get to a high priority, but it needs to focus on providing multiple benefits, really. And so we would have thresholds that would define these buckets of high, medium, and low. And you can see that the intent is, at least with the low-priority properties, that we would set those to the side. The high priority would probably be the most focused, but we don't want to necessarily tie our hands. There may be some medium-priority properties that have some validity as we move forward into the process. So what we would do after we kind of categorize these in high and medium priority is then we take it to a second step. And where this comes in is with these three categories we've defined of active, passive, and preservation, the needs associated with those properties to provide those functions are quite different. And so the intent was to develop criteria and checklists very specific to each of those types of uses and public needs. And so that's why we went to the second stage. And the intent would, when it gets through the first phase, it would be put towards one of those categories. In some rare cases, it might be able to serve more than one, and we will evaluate it under two, if it, if we think it can fit. But in most cases, we'll, it'll be pretty obvious which category it would fall under. So then we have a checklist associated with each of those purple boxes. If a property is identified best for an active use, it would go through an active-use evaluation. And then, as you can see, it would be a similar process, accumulates points. And then the highest priority, if it gets into that category of point total, would be where staff would focus their attention initially. Now, I'd like to state, for those of you kind of wondering how, we're trying to create some structure, but we're also trying to create some flexibility. You can see there with the medium or low priority, it also says, save for future consideration. This is only getting to a point of targeting properties. There's quite a due diligence process that follows. Some of the high-priority candidate properties may serve the public needs, but maybe we don't have a willing seller. Maybe there's some other issues that pop up with limiting the ability to acquire it. So we will focus on the high priority first, but that doesn't mean that we wouldn't move down the list and consider other properties, especially in the case of cost and getting value for what you might get with a property. So I just wanted to give that background and take you a little farther into what these criteria are. As mentioned, two-step process, second step focusing more on active-passive. And I guess, again, I wanted to mention, high priority is really the starting point.
Wait, can you go back again? That was a little quick.
Sure. This is really just reiterating what the graphic just showed, that it was speaking to. Okay. So that first box, the first evaluation checklist, this bulleted list is the list of criteria that we've identified at this point, and was presented to the Parks Commission last week as well. We have some feedback from them, and we would like feedback from the council as well. So again, if you're thinking, property starts with zero points, and there are points associated with each of these, if it hits two to three of these criteria, more than likely, it's going to move on to the next stage. So property has legal access. This is where the priorities of community start coming in. Acquisition will support expanded trail use. It will support existing tree canopy preservation. It will support linking streams and wildlife corridors. So if it happens to do two of those, it scores that many more points. Acquisition will support expanded waterfront recreation. Then you can see there's a couple other kind of larger categories here where it will support or increase other active recreation use. So even though we're not talking about points, what I can tell you is our philosophy about it is that these initial ones, trail use, existing tree canopy, the ones that tie to the community's desires would be of more point value than these catch-alls here. Acquisition will support an increase in active recreation. There's another one supporting other types of passive recreation. Then there's some other potential points that would be really beneficial to the city if it provides operational needs and supports that the city may need. Also, if it's adjacent and connected to existing city-owned property where it may Also, if it's adjacent and connected to existing city-owned property where it makes it easier and there's more efficient to maintain, and also confirming that it fulfills the implementation goals of adopted plans. So those are the initial criteria.
Maybe we could get some feedback on those initial criteria. Tom?
Great. And if you would like me to go to a particular slide, let me know.
Looking at the criteria, perhaps it was implied but not directly called out, but I didn't see watershed protection specifically listed.
I thought there was one on that.
It was linking streams, but that did not cover, for instance, the protection of Ebride Creek watershed or Pine Lake or Zaccus.
Okay.
Is that a deliberate omission, or just a omission?
When you speak of that, so are you thinking of a tributary, let's say, to Ebride Creek?
I'm thinking of the whole bloody watershed.
Okay.
There are pieces of it that are essential to maintaining stream flow, and if they are not protected, then we lose the stream eventually.
I think we can certainly add that terminology to create clarity. It wasn't intended to be excluded. I think it was intended to be encompassed in the stream corridors.
I prefer it be specifically called out.
Very good.
I agree. I think we got head nods on that.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor.
Great, thank you. Could you go back a slide? Okay, this one will work. I know earlier on, there was the priorities that came back from the survey and that sort of thing. And here, the last point talks about the wildlife corridors. And so, I could really speak for a while about the wildlife corridors, because we have historic wildlife corridors that have traveled Sumamish for good reason. Look at the habitat. We have 550 acres of wetlands that support the wildlife habitat up here on the plateau. The city and the community has talked about their value of wildlife corridors. The comprehensive plan, since it was written, has stated, "We value wildlife," wildlife in general. I just, I actually want to make a distinction now between wildlife and the corridors, because the corridors, because of our urban evolution, are broken. 228th Avenue broke the historic wildlife corridors in our city. So I don't know that we can actually replace these corridors, but wildlife continues to be a high-priority value of our community, and I would say that it's a distinctive characteristic that makes Sumamish what Sumamish is, different than other cities, because we are on the urban growth boundary. And because we are on the urban growth boundary, the wildlife is not going to stop at that city limit and not come into our city. They are going to. And we have, as I said, 550 acres of wetlands that are really excellent habitat. We have 12 wetlands that I think are priority wetlands, that are large. Example I like to use is 244th, the bridge that's there. If anybody goes to that bridge, and you were to look left and the right of that bridge, it's amazing what really is there, and the Hazel Wolf Preserve. If you see what is there, it's phenomenal what we have and the characteristics of our city. I'm elaborating on that because we're now going to use a criteria that I'm not sure we've defined very well.
Yeah.
Of what it is, what the wildlife corridor is, or the wildlife habitat. I have wanted to see us go back to this for quite some time. I brought this up in several meetings over years, really, that we keep letting it go away and not defining it. So I don't think this evening is the night that we can actually really discuss it, but I would sure like to have a couple of other council members that would join in on giving this as an agenda topic, or give a direction to a committee to try and help identify what the wildlife characteristic of our city should be. Some of it might just be identifying those 12 wetlands, not changing the buffers, not doing anything to them, but distinguishing those wetlands as an area that is a preserve for wildlife in our city. It would recognize what our community has been saying to us for years. So I'm sorry to go, and thank you for indulging me on that long explanation, but the crux of this is we need a definition of this criteria regardless of what people feel about what I'm saying right now.
Would you feel better with wildlife habitat areas rather than corridors? Because as he said, the corridors have been broken, and maybe we'd rather wildlife habitat.
Don, I think this is worthy of a more complex discussion at another time, but while the corridors have to a great extent been broken, there does remain the fact that we do have wildlife that resides in the wetlands, as Bob pointed out, or even some of the woods that are still left that are not wetlands. Even though 228th is a major corridor for vehicles, I often see deer running across it as an example.
Yeah, some don't make it.
Most do.
Why don't we put quotes around that?
Don, I was going to suggest that in the interim, until we finish our discussion, maybe we could put wildlife corridor slash habitat, and just keep it as a marker until we figure out what we want to do.
Christie's up next, anyway.
Thanks.
I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to see a definition of it. I mean, I agree that corridors are broken.
I'm going to concur with you, Bob. In fact, I had the wildlife corridor scribbled on my page, too, as something to bring up. So you took most of the words right out of my mouth, which is that, you know, we're using that terminology frequently in the city, and yet, we disregard them all the time every time a new development comes in. And I want to highlight the fact that it is not just the, our wetlands that, you know, house our wildlife. They move. They don't just hang out there. And they use the Ebride Creek ravine. I mean, they come up out of that ravine next to my house all the time. So there's areas of the city that our wildlife, you know, frequently travel. It would be, you know, it would behoove us to identify those as a city, because they are worth protecting. And we love to throw around the term wildlife corridor like it's something we're actually protecting in the city. It's not. And I agree with Bob that it's worthwhile defining, so I would certainly support you in going forward and exploring that, not tonight, on another night. But I did have a couple of other things. I wanted to ask if there's any consideration in the process for cost. I think you brought that up at one point, but my question was, what if we identify a very high-priority parcel that's outside of the money that we have set aside? Is there a loopback to council somehow on that?
Very good question. I wanted to be clear that this process is not the end-all, be-all that, let's just say, there's, we get through this process of all the properties that have been nominated, and we've identified eight or 10 high-priority ones. All that is going to mean is that you're, if you approve the staff to dig deeper into those, there'll be more due diligence, and I think it's very presumptive with very limited information to make assumptions about what an acquisition might cost, for various reasons. It may, maybe there's an opportunity where it's not just a fee simple acquisition, where it's an easement, or there can be some kind of land trade, or conservation easement instead of fee simple. So you really got to get farther into the process, I think, to make that determination. So we were trying not to have cost an overriding factor, although you'll see there is a criteria at the second stage where we at least acknowledge that as part of the process.
Well, it's good. I just, I wouldn't want things to be excluded on that basis alone. I think we'd want to be able to evaluate them further for the very points that you made. See if I had any other questions. You guys have more to go in your presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, then I'll wait for the rest of my questions later.
First on the wildlife corridor, while it's important and people love it, I think we have to define what is the wildlife we want. We've been trying for years, and we saw one draft report that had gopher and rats on the list as well, and that we said, no, I don't think those are the ones we want to keep. And even the deer, they're in overabundance, and we haven't been able to address what is the size of that deer population here before we have to cull it. Every other city I know, of major city or similar cities out east in the Midwest, define that, and they open up to make sure they cull it back into a number that's safe and that doesn't continue to bring other bobcats and cougars down to start feeding and dangers. And it also is one of the highest causes of accidents. I mean, before, they did a study on East Lakes and Mamish Parkway, and the highest number of them were caused because they were stopping for deers and other animals running across there. So at some point, we've got to grapple with that issue. Specific here to the initial prioritization criteria, and I thank you for the presentation, the work. I think it's very worthwhile that, what you're doing. I do have two concerns that I've seen, or three concerns. The first one is, as we start to look at the property prioritization criteria on Exhibit One, Page 1, Point 7, and you have it on one of your slides here, "Acquisition provides for city operational needs as administrative, maintenance, and storage facilities." I don't think the council nor the citizens were viewing this to have money spent on that issue. That should go through the normal budgeting process.
Agreed.
In operation. So I think that should not be appearing here. Likewise, we had a long discussion.
Well, let's just get a consensus. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, we all agree.
The other one that I have problems with, and you've brought it up and highlighted, maybe because it's in alphabetical order, is the active recreational use. The last time we had spoken, I had specifically said that I'm concerned that this money that's for land acquisition would be siphoned off for parks and fields. You have a pro-plan process that's scheduled, and that's going through. I think those type of things are very worthy. I fully support fields, but I don't think they should be commingled with this money that was for land acquisition. I think that should go through the pro-plan and defend it through the normal process, rather than looking at tapping into the land acquisition process here.
I agree with that.
Clarification, if I might ask a question. Are you meaning, so this is intended to be land acquisition to support active-use recreation? It's just for land acquisition, not development of it?
I understand. Land acquisition, if you're going to buy for fields, and we're going to probably have to do that given what's taking place here, or facilities, that we're going to probably have to, we have a process that's been well-established. It's in process right now under the pro-plan, and we can account for that money there. I don't believe that that was the purpose when people were thinking of it. The preservation, the trails, all of that was. And I would like to see the separation of those fields, and I'll support the fields, but under the pro-plan, so that, because otherwise, we're going to continue to siphon money off from what the people in your own presentation you cite was the trails and the preservation and the canopy that they were asking for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
May I interrupt? When we started the land acquisition project, we were charged with the task of coming up with a tool to evaluate land acquisition for all potential purposes. In fact, that was one of the goals, very first discussion with the city council. So we've included, we're trying to build a tool that will allow us to evaluate potential property for whatever we might need it for. This work is housed in the Parks Department, but they've been working across all departments on this tool. So I want to get clarification before we move on, that you're directing us to take out evaluation for city facilities like maintenance or administrative.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're changing, I guess we're changing direction. I just wanted to clarify, that wasn't the direction we got in the beginning.
And Jesse, I'd like to point out that your pro-plan, the last time you presented it, you did a geographic survey, and you said it had to be within a half-mile, and the only place that was missing was in the northeast corridor of our city. So you've done those analyses as part of your pro-plan, so that is part of the original one, and I'm sure you're going to be doing that analysis again as part of the pro-plan. And I'd rather have that continue to be there, and this money be separate for looking at how do we buy the trails and the preservation, and let's look at that, and I will support those fields 100%, but they should go in the pro-plan and the normal process and avoid a commingling of funds, and then people saying, well, you've now taken from the $13 million, $4 million for new fields.
If I may respond, we're not obligating your $13 million Parks Fund by this policy. We're simply giving you a tool to evaluate potential land acquisition.
Understood.
I would certainly encourage you to consider how we would pay for the lands we're evaluating across all considerations, whether it's a future building, or an athletic field, or preservation. I'm concerned that we're taking, I guess I'm just, the direction is a little concerning to me, that $13 million is something separate. You will have the opportunity to figure out how to spend it later. We're trying to come up with a tool to evaluate potential acquisition, based on goals that are identified in all of our plans.
I agree, but that's always taking place under the pro-plan. You can do the same evaluation under the pro-plan.
Can I add a couple of?
Anjali, go ahead.
Yeah. So I wanted to respond to both the things. One is, you know, the initial prioritization criteria, this is just one of the points that if the piece of land we are looking at is going to meet the needs of some of the priorities we've heard from the community, and by the way, you know, we think it's a good location for some of these potential, it would just score higher. I think that's all the intent is. I will acknowledge that at this point, we do not have the next in-depth level of, you know, you've seen step one and step two. You will see on Chad's slides, there's a slide that says specifically, "We do not have the established criteria for step two for any of these administrative facilities or amenities." We don't know what they are today. You know, we don't know if transportation is going to become a priority, we don't know if we're going to need more maintenance. And so, the only goal here is, when you look at a piece of property, you've got to think bigger picture, and so step one will address that. And step two, we acknowledge that you'd have to go through a very focused process, like we did for the community center. We knew what it needed, we looked at six or seven sites and brought that to council. So that's how we've approached it, and again, we are open to, you know, feedback and a change in direction. As for the other concern of active, you know, use as opposed to passive and preservation, we're also figuring out, you know, how to make that support reflective of what we've heard from the community. So we didn't hear zero in active from the community. What we heard is trails is their highest priority, and I'm going to just, you know, the ballpark I remember is about 87% on that, and then with preservation, it was about 78. It was like really high. And then we had about 47% of active, so it wasn't zero. So I think moving forward, what we have to see is to make sure that the acquisition is reflective of those priorities.
I think the concern we had with the administrative maintenance and storage facilities is, if the city determines a need of storage facility, you're going to go through criteria which they compete with all other activities, they're not going to pass.
Yes.
They're going to come out at a low priority.
That's why we agreed to take it out.
Mr. Mayor, if I might clarify, I think this, it's on the top of the slide here. I think this particular criteria may have caused more confusion than its value. I think what this was intended for in this initial prioritization was, we were trying to, as Anjali was saying, they were trying to think bigger and broader. In some cases, with regard to a particular acquisition, it may have facilities, or buildings, or structures that may exist on the property, that may have some value to the city. So what this was intended to be was additional points if by chance, the property could serve another function for the city. It's not an end-all, be-all, and you'll actually see in the slide later on, we spent a lot of time talking about exactly what you're discussing, that based on the public survey and the feedback and what we've asked of the community, there was no discussion about maintenance facilities and things like that. And those will be very specific needs, and more than likely are going to need a separate process. And you'll see that actually in the rest of the presentation. So my recommendation might be to allow me to present the rest of this, and that might fill in a little bit of gaps in sort of where this process is going, and then we could have more questions, if that's okay.
Okay, well, we have a few other questions right here.
Okay.
I reserve the right to return.
Of course.
Tom?
Yeah, I've got a few questions, and I really like the concept that we're trying to build here as a process, so thank you. It says each property will be evaluated. By whom? Staff, commission, council, all of the above? Who?
Staff.
Staff, and then they'll bring it, where's the commission play into this? Parks and Rec, since you guys are sitting here.
With property, with property acquisition, due to the confidential nature, we usually don't involve the commission directly.
Okay, that's what I wanted to better understand. And then, what I'm a little concerned about is the waiting, and who is going to decide on how to weight the criteria? Will that be staff deciding that? Because that can change the whole. Because that can change the whole prioritization.
And that's the numbers that they've put together, and we are testing a lot of properties and seeing is it even working, because we should be able to, you know, give it out to five different staff, and we should come up with similar results, because that's the whole point of this exercise, is to remove the subjectivity.
Right.
And, you know, either a property has dense tree canopy, then it just scores the five points, or how many ever points, and the whole point is that it works with, you know, different people, different staff members doing it.
So, the reason we don't have those points tonight is because you're doing that testing and-
Well, you will see the points in the next iteration. We thought if we brought them tonight, we would focus on the points versus-
Good point.
The criteria.
Well, I think that's fair. I mean, I think the criteria is good, but the points can change the whole thing, is my point, is my point. So, then, my second question is, is there any of these criteria that if you said no, that that's a veto and it's out, even if it scores 100 points otherwise?
Very good question. We talked about another checklist that would kind of be a, you gotta, you gotta get a certain number of checks to be able to move on, and we found that because the acquisition, I guess the breadth of the kinds of properties that we might be acquiring, it was really hard to come up with checkmarks of why something might not be considered. So, that's why we went to this approach where the more it's in line with the public desires, the more points it gets. The ones that don't fit that will just fall out.
Because it's an initial prioritization.
Exactly.
Yeah, fair enough, okay. Last question I have, it just says to throw out another criteria, and was it discussed? The cost to maintain the property.
Good point, the M&amp;O.
So, you know, we, this list was getting fairly long, and there are a few things like immediacy of threat and cost of maintenance that are under a lot of the grant criteria, and so, they get scored that way, but if it's important to include them on this list, we are happy to do that as well.
It's not in the follow-on prioritization analysis, right?
No, it's not, right now.
I think it should be, and that's why I'm throwing that out as an additional criteria.
Okay. Yeah.
If I make comment on the maintenance, though, again, kind of going back to what you were talking about, that's very preliminary analysis of these properties, so we may be looking at a five-acre parcel that we're not entirely sure how we're going to develop, so it's hard to put a maintenance cost to a piece of property that we don't know exactly what's going to be on the property. Now, that can be generalized by if we know that it's going to remain as open space, we have a good idea what that would be, but if we were going to develop it more to, say, active recreation, sorry, that there might, obviously, there's maintenance and operations for a ball field is significantly higher than, say, a trailhead and a mile of trail. So, it'd be hard at this juncture, when we're evaluating a piece of property, to know exactly what the maintenance and operations might be.
Well, but you're setting up criteria, whether trail use, tree canopy, waterfront, so you have a sense of what the property is going to be used for already.
Generally, but yeah, but just know that that can be real.
So, I think you could get a sense of the cost to maintain, that I think could be a big factor, in my opinion.
True, true.
Unless we go to like Big Rock Park, and then it kills us.
Well, I was going to offer that we could at least provide a carrying cost. The properties we've acquired over the years have a wide variety of carrying costs, some come with homes and structures. Big Rock Park is a good example, has a higher carrying cost than the YMCA property right now, which is just vacant land, so we can probably put an initial assessment in there. But I will say, to speak to Angie's point, some of this is opportunity acquisition, and we go through a separate process with the public and the city council to determine what the future of that property might be. It's difficult to project.
Kathy?
Yes, and I do agree that we should leave the active sports fields in here. I feel pretty strongly that should be part of the process, but the one that I'm seeing that I feel is missing is damaged property, or property that we would use for tree replanting. So, for example, there's that parcel right on Snake Hill that we purchased a number of years ago. It had been stripped of the trees because somebody was going to build there, they were building, they weren't permitted to do so, but they took all the trees down. It's a great place to do replanting, some of it will be used for Snake Hill, and then there's potential for trail there, but it was an opportunistic purchase, and that, so if there are other purchases, and we were walking up on Northeast 6th the other day, where there are some foundations that are in, the property has never been completed, it's pretty ugly up there, and that may be another place where we might buy something on the cheap, where we might do tree replacement at some point in time, or use that for that property. So, I don't want to lose sight of that, there may be some of those opportunities out there. The other one I'm looking at is, let's make sure we get the pollinator corridors in with the wildlife corridors. And the last one is a one that has evolved over a couple of conversations in the last few days, not quite sure where it should live. We started off talking about, at the town center meeting, about the need to make the assumption that was presented to us by the architect, who many of you didn't have a chance to talk with, that his assumption was going to be that people would be able to walk or bike to the town center, and then they would, that would allow them to do less parking, and it would be more economically viable. Well, there happens to be, near where I live and near where Kristy lives, if you live on 214th and Southeast 4th, there isn't a connection, other than a little trail currently, that anybody could walk through from 214th to get to the town center. If we don't acquire those trail connections in and around the entire town center, or other places that we want to make sure that people can access, that is going to undermine the economic viability of the town center. And we had this follow-on conversation today at our transportation meeting, and the discussion was, well, the transportation, the TMP, is not going to cover those trails. Should the trails live in the park? Should those trails that are going to create those connections to create that economic viability, should that live in the parks? Should it live in the town center? Should it live in the public works? And how do we make sure that we grab onto those before they're gone?
Jessie, you want to comment?
Chad, can you go to the slide that shows that very last bullet, that property acquisition fulfills a goal of an adopted plan? I'm wondering, Councilmember Huckabee, if that last bullet under the initial screening criteria will meet that objective, that this acquisition supports goals of our adopted plans? I think you're speaking to pedestrian connectivity.
I think it's worthy of it, but if you're talking about it in the parks, I mean, what we heard was that for economic viability for the town center, we need these, which is a different level of priority to me, and particularly since we have the one example where if you live four blocks west, you're on Southeast 4th and you're four blocks west, you have to walk four blocks north, turn, and then walk four blocks back in order to walk down to the town center. It clearly will not, it will discourage people from walking, but will encourage them to use their cars, which will not help make our town center successful. So, it seemed to us that, and I see Kristy nodding her head, and I think we had a good conversation this afternoon, that maybe this should be pulled out and put in a separate grouping, because we should be out actively looking for those now, because those areas are being developed, and those connections are going to be lost fairly quickly unless we have some way of preserving them.
You just said something really key, Kathy, then, as these areas are being developed. I would maintain that that could be requirement of the approval of development, that the developer provide this facility to the public.
We already have two that have been approved, and could potentially lose, and I emailed Angie, as a matter of fact, and Jeff, to see whether the little trail would be saved.
Well, we did require this in a couple of other places, Ilhia, not Ilhia, but Mystic Light comes to mind, that there was a trail required on that, and I think even the Ichijo property here has a trail requirement as well, so.
I understand.
So, let's not get too many side conversations here.
What I was, what I was driving at is that we were thinking, why aren't we looking at the town center specifically, looking at all the connections around the town center to make sure that we aren't losing something and being more-
I agree that this is important, but as Don said, this is a kind of a micro discussion here.
May I offer a potential solution?
Let Jessie comment on it.
I think what we can do here, because I hear what you're saying, and Bullet 2, it talks about expanded trail use, I think we need to broaden that to talk about connectivity, pedestrian, bikes, whatever. And then, that final bullet, I think, may still pick this up, because when we adopt our pro-plan and our transportation master plan, we will identify specific walking, biking routes through both of those planning efforts, and then do the things that you were just talking about, not only help support the land acquisition policy, but also as development comes in, we can require those connections. So, let us, let us enhance the wording here to address your concern regarding connectivity.
I would like an answer back to see whether the trail, there's one trail connection off of 218th that work goes through the Asbury neighborhood. It's the only one, and whether that is going to be preserved, because there's the Bella development coming in right next to it, there's seven homes, or is that going to be lost? And have we lost-
That's a side issue that we should follow up on. I'm really curious about that, too.
And if I may comment as well, trails were the highest priority through this whole evaluation process from the public, and so, any criteria that supports trail development or acquisition that supports trail development is going to be weighted and scored higher. So, it's built into this system, the trails are some of the highest priorities we have in the community, and so, their scoring is higher through this process, so that's weighted in there, it's built into the system.
Yes, I agree, and actually, you'll see, Councilmember Huckabee, that when we get to the passive use criteria, because remember, this is just the initial, it gets a certain amount of points, and it's actually not the way we're looking at it right now, it's not a high threshold to move on, and then, once you move on, we actually get into some of the things that you're speaking to. Connections to destinations, neighborhood connections, things like that. So, as we go through this more, you might have some specific comments on how we might change the wording of those to support what you're talking about with regard to the town center.
Okay, we have a few more questions here. Tom?
Yeah, on the page two of this thing, it talks about an identified partner, utilities are available.
The ranking, that's for active recreation. We're still on the property prioritization criteria, Page 1. Hold that question there?
Oh, you will.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I just want to understand a little bit more, hopefully I'm on track here, about the point about breaking out the active, just want to understand that better, because when I read this, I never really, it didn't occur to me that we would break that out, that that would be something that's broken out. But what I, what I was looking at is the comment that there's 100 properties right now that are, have been, you know, put on the table, and so, this is really, if I'm understanding this correctly, this is the first way of flushing out, you know, for the staff to really look at getting a handle on those 100 properties, and then obviously, it'll riddle down, it'll be more. So, I'm not, I'm still not sure I'm grasping why we would just eliminate the active, active use, that that would be something that would be in here if some of those properties fit in there at all. I understand that they have to fit the pro-plan, and I think, you know, here on this page, the initial, it's talking about the parks plan and the pro-plan, and if you look at the criteria, it does reference those plans, so it is keeping that in mind as they're doing the evaluation. And the other thing that I would say is, if I'm understanding this correctly, too, at the end of all this evaluation, the city council makes the decision if they want to buy this, and they're going to ask all the questions about, you know, is it worth it? Is it worth the money? Is there a value? Is the maintenance there? You know what I mean? So, really, this is kind of a way of flushing, so I'm looking at it from that level, I'm open to the comments, because like I said, I didn't even look at it from breaking out the active property, and that may have a lot of value, but it just seems like we're looking for a tool to be able, you know, bring down the properties that are out there.
I think it belongs in there.
Yeah, I'll answer that question. The problem is, when this was created, this was not looking at active fields. Yes, there's an interrelationship, and that, and that's my concern, is that suddenly you're going to find on the land acquisition, well, you know, out of that $12 million, let's take a million for one of these sports fields, but that was not the intent when we set this money up, and we specifically called it out at the last meeting, that we did not want swings, slides, and fields covered this, because there's a different process for that. So, that's why I think it should be held separately, because the citizens did not understand that this was going to be for sports fields as well, albeit it could be the last one, but it's highlighted quite prominently, even though it doesn't put the first, it's in the next slides we're going to see again. So, that's my concern. I was also going to go back to Councilmember Hornish's comment. Councilmember Hornish is, I think, is correct on the maintenance and operation, it was a side comment, but I should point out that nine years ago, former Councilmember Lee Fellaini always said that you're going to spend more on the maintenance and operation than on the property, and you should be accounting for that in it, and so, just to keep reminding the council what's already been through, and so, that should be a prioritization.
Yes, this whole thing was frankly in reaction to the number of trees that were coming in around town. That's how this whole discussion started.
Okay, did you want to comment on that, Jessie?
Just one more comment, just quickly to Councilmember O'Dell. This was also born out of a request from the council. We had considered a number of property acquisitions for a variety of needs, and it was in those discussions, not specific to any use, where you asked us, put together some criteria. So, important to remember that in my time here, many of these properties are coming to us, we're not seeking them, and we needed a tool to quickly be able to screen for opportunities. The other thing I will tell you is, it's very easy to think about now, five years, 10 years, but with development, transportation, parks, facilities, we're often needing to make acquisition decisions now to support things that are in the 20- to 50-year horizon. You know, if a future city council, 30 years from now, needs to build a building, and we had an opportunity to secure land now, you know, so I'm just challenging you to think about it a little bit differently. We're looking for a screening tool to evaluate properties that come through the door, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Kristy?
So, a couple of things, and I'm going to revisit things people have already mentioned. One is on this whole active versus passive, and I would agree with Councilmember Valderrama that I think our citizens' idea was that the $13 million that we had slated in last year's CIP, and the $7 million that we set aside for 2017 for a land acquisition, I'm not sure anybody had a sucker feel in the back of their mind when we were discussing that. However, I do see that there is a process still for evaluating parcels for active use, but I think we need to put those in different silos, right? So, the $13 million can't be commingled with the parks. So, I think we can use this process for evaluating active use and passive use, but I think when we talk about the $13 million over the next six years, that that can't go together with the active use, because I, it wasn't my sense when we set aside those funds.
And I want to be clear, that's not the intent.
Okay, then I'm okay leaving-
That is not the intent at all. That is a completely separate discussion. This is a screening tool for land acquisition.
And then I'm okay leaving the active use in, as long as there is a firm understanding, and it's written somewhere that the-
We could document that.
The dollars that we set aside are not for the active use.
And I would like to ask to let you know that this process creates a list of properties, which we then kind of gather up the high-priority pieces, the ones that rate high, and we take those to council, and we're basically asking for permission, should we investigate these more for possible acquisition? I mean, just because the list is produced, doesn't mean we're going to go out and start buying properties like crazy. We're going to take the proposed properties to the council and say, "Which ones do you want us to pursue?" So, this is still just a screening and an initial step before we even begin talking about acquisition of the properties.
And that's fair. I do have one other thing, and I want to go back to what Councilmember Huckabee was talking about, and this very particular trail connection that we're talking about. I think when we talk about trails, and the way that I'm reading it and hear from a property acquisition standpoint, and maybe you agree or don't agree, but is that I'm not thinking about these short little trail connections, which this would be a very short trail connection. Maybe this is what was envisioned- Maybe this is what was envisioned in here, but when I think about trails, I think about more passive use, like I park with passive use. But I think Councilmember Huckabee brings up a good point, which is these connections, and I don't think we can look at it just at town center. I think town center is very important, but I think we have to look at this throughout the entire city, is preserving these connections to promote walkability or, you know, somebody riding their bike. I mean, I use that trail that she's talking about right now until it disappears. And anybody that wants to walk to town center, it will disappear unless we have an active means of preserving it. I'm just not sure, and I'm still not feeling terribly comfortable unless we rework this wording so that it's, that the word "trail" isn't just a trail, like through a passive use park, that it could be a connection between neighborhoods, too.
I think the suggestion was to add some verbiage there about connectivity, right?
Right, so we're leaping ahead to planning now, right? The pro plan will hypothetically identify a number of trail corridors where we say we want to go from A to B. We know that's a priority. This allows us to start looking at land acquisition to complete that trail connection, which may take 20 to 50 years, but we're putting tools in place to look at it from both planning and development and land acquisition.
20 to 50?
We know from our experience that some trail connections do actually take that long.
No, I totally agree with the connectivity. And another comment I wanted to make is on the cost of maintenance. That is a consideration, but so is the cost of opportunity. Vacant land is only vacant once, well, except in Detroit where it becomes... So to capture some key vacant parcels in this city, if down the road we decide it costs too much to maintain them, or we can always sell them. The capturing at first is, look what we did down by the waterfront, and capturing, spinning off the parcel we wanted and then selling the rest of it. So I encourage us to be very generous in our criteria such that things pass through to the point where we can really consider them. Do you have a final comment, Tom?
I'm kind of getting to this funding of active. Correct me and help me, I'm trying to remember. Do we have a capital improvement for parks and recs, or for the pro, we don't have a pro plan yet, but...
You have a six-year capital plan that identifies both active and passive use.
Right, so the fact that we include active in this analysis does not say that it's going to be funded out of the 13 million.
Correct, that is absolutely correct.
How it gets funded is another question later on. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
In fact, you put that in really as a placeholder at the time we were doing that capital plan, and we haven't had any further discussion about how you'd like to use those resources. That is certainly to come after this initial work is done, and we've heard you, absolutely.
Okay.
Park CIP basically reflects the existing pro plan to a great extent.
Correct, and you're working through a pro plan update now, which will also include an updated six-year plan. And what I would recommend is when we update that six-year plan, if the council is ready, we can specify how we would like to use that $13 million. It's still there. So that's something we can bring forward when you get to that step later this year.
Okay, Jack, I think we're through page one. We're making good progress.
Thank you, happy to continue on. I guess one of the things I was hearing as we move into the next stage that I want to remind you, it was discussed in earlier presentations, that this policy is very much sort of an umbrella policy, and it really needs the support of all those other documents that's being mentioned. Trails plans, the pro parks plan, maybe an urban forestry plan. All of these things are going to be the baseline of what this refers to. It's, we're not trying to define that in here, we're just trying to define general priorities. But when it comes down to a specific location for a trail connection, a lot of the guidance is going to come from these other documents. So just know that when we're trying to create this criteria, it's still at a very general level, and it's trying to get us a bit more focused on community priorities. But all of these things kind of come together as you really start to identify specific property. And we got to do all those checks and balances to make sure it hits all the right points. So if you don't mind, I will move forward into what we're calling the step two. So you go through this initial prioritization. Properties that score over a certain threshold will move to the next stage, and we will then identify whether they're most appropriate for active recreation use, passive recreation use, or preservation. And as mentioned, there may be some cases where it could function as both. And we will actually run it through both to see how it scores. And if it can serve both purposes, more than likely, it's going to be one of those candidate properties we want to consider. So active recreation, just for clarity, I wanted to make sure some of the things that are included in that, I think there was a focus on playgrounds and athletic fields. But one of the ones I wanted to make sure we pointed out was the waterfront recreation we included in here. And I know that's been a topic and was really in the original memo from the Parks Commission to the council, identified as kind of a key priority and generally scored very high from the public survey. So that's one of the items that's in that category. So if some things, properties categorized under active, it will go through a similar process. And so this is the criteria that we started to identify. And again, the purpose of the second level is that what you're looking for in a property for active use may be very, very different from what you're looking for in a property for preservation. So that's why we had to kind of define different criteria for those. So for active, here's some of the list we've generated. Adjacent to an existing city-owned open space. Located in an underserved area for active recreation. And again, this is just saying it's underserved. We're not saying where that is. The pro plan will tell you where that is. Flat or can be developed for intended use. Most active recreation needs that, but not all. That's why we say for intended use. So if we know it's waterfront, for instance, we know that it's not going to be necessarily a big flat parcel. There's not many of those in the city. No mapped critical areas on site or has large developable area. A potential partner for development, operation, or maintenance of the new facility. A lot of times we won't know this, but on occasion, there might be a case where that is more obvious. And all it's doing is, it means it'll score more points. Doesn't mean it's the end-all be-all. Walking distance from neighborhoods. Well-connected to neighborhoods by existing sidewalks or trails. Utilities available, because in many cases, you might be providing restrooms or other things to support that active use. Size is a minimum of five developable acres.
Can I stop you on that one?
Sure.
Not sure what the rationale is here, and what comes to mind are small neighborhood pocket parks that could be like a half an acre, basically two lots in an R4 area that could actually add a lot to the community. Doesn't have to be developed more than a bunch of grass with a couple of swings on it.
Agreed, and if, again, if we go through this and feel that's a too restrictive of a criteria, it could be removed. Again, it's not a pass fail on this particular criteria. It's just the thought that if it happens to have that, it might be that much more valuable to the city for some future active use, so it scores an extra point. So that's the intent. Provides new access to Lake Samamish, Pine Lake, or Beaver Lake, being that waterfront recreation was one of the priorities. And here's where we start getting into costs and so on. We wanted to start thinking about that. We have here, rights can be acquired below fair market value. Again, that might be a little hard, be hard to determine, but we kept it general enough that based on the context of what we might know about the owner, the situation of what we're trying to accomplish, that maybe there's a means to acquire it in some way that will cost less. So it would score more points for that. And then lastly, the acquisition aligns with RCO grant funding criteria.
What is RCO?
That's the Recreation and Conservation Office from the state. They distribute grant funds to local municipalities for things such as land acquisition for parks and recreation, as well as for trails, and then they also fund development of parks and trails.
You could be more general there. It's not just RCO that have grant opportunities.
True, true. So that's the list for active use, so I don't know if you would like to comment on that or allow me to go through the other two.
Looks like we're ready to go through the other two.
Okay. Next on the list was passive recreation. The kinds of uses that we're considering as passive are picnic areas, trails, wildlife viewing, cultural historic sites, community gardens, but it's not exclusive to just those. Those are examples of. So again, some of these are repetitive because they do apply in any case, but some are very specific to passive use. So adjacent to existing city-owned open space. Located in an underserved area of the city for passive recreation. Again, that's really referencing other plans. Again, the reference to partner for development and/or maintenance of new facilities. Provides a high priority trail connection. Now, you know, we get into definitions again, what is that defined as? But I think in our case, in the short term, I think that's a bit based on staff and council's judgment. But in the midterm, there'll be more definition in the pro parks plan about recreational trails and what are defined corridors that want to be developed and connections made. And so it should be, again, a reference to another document. Connects to an existing trail system or desirable destination. So this could be town center as an example, or other destinations within the community. Offers a variety of terrain types and difficulties. Provides an east-west, so these are clearly trail-oriented criteria. Provides an east-west connection. Contains desirable habitat features.
Why just east-west?
What's that?
Why just east-west?
I think there's a general feeling within staff, and we heard it in some of our public feedback, about east-west connections being the most challenging within the community.
We talked about it at the TMP this evening.
I'm not sure that I would like it restricted to just east-west.
Well, it's giving a preference of east-west over south.
But I'm not sure that east-west is more of a problem than north-south in some places.
And that might be something, it's fair comment in that we're taking some limited feedback to generate that criteria, and maybe that's best deferred to when the trails plan is fully developed as part of the parks plan.
I know we have east-west issues in arterial roadway connections, but trails?
If I can comment, I think part of this conversation on this east-west has been the fact that we have a trail, East Lake Samamish Trail, but very limited access to it by foot or by bike, and that's an east-west connection. So you can look at it down the hill, but you can't always get there.
That is one of the justifications, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Now we get into some of the other attributes of passive properties that we find. We're hearing that there was value in from the community's point of view. It contains desirable habitat features. It's part of a riparian or wildlife corridor. And I totally concur about defining what that is. That's certainly part of those things that needs to reference the code or other plans. Has historical tribal or cultural significance. And then again, the reference to rights can be acquired below fair market value and acquisition aligns with, we'll call it, grant funding criteria. Are there any comments on the passive?
I think the comment was brought up earlier about costs or cost benefit. At some place in the criteria, you're wasting time if you're providing a quarter-acre parcel that's listed for $3 million, even if it gets high points in all the other criteria. So to me, cost benefits should be somewhere in there.
Again, in some cases on this proactive, I think the interesting part of this is that these aren't always properties that are listed for sale. We, you suggested a great example before on the waterfront where there was a creative way to get access to the waterfront, spend a significant amount of money, but then be able to spin part of it off to offset the money. So I think our thought was to allow those properties to get through this process and then make it to the next due diligence stage to determine if there are some creative ways that you could acquire it at less cost, because it's making a lot of presumptions, I guess. It's presuming a fee simple acquisition when there might be other creative ways to do it. So that was the thought behind it.
That's fair enough. Kristy?
Yes. There we go. I have what's somewhat an unrelated question to the process, but I'm curious because I'd written a note down when I looked under playgrounds, because it says, spaces for children to play that include improved surfaces and may or may not include play structures and/or splash pads. Have we ever done any type of usage assessment of our parks? I mean, we have Big Rock Park, which I would classify as a very different type of playground structure over something like, say, E-Bright.
I don't know that we've recently done a usage count. Is that something that we're contemplating as part of the pro plan?
Of the sites, but we're not necessarily doing a head count, if you will.
We, at one point, we did some analysis on a couple of our properties, both passive and active types of parks, using vehicle counts, but that's not, unless somebody's standing out with a clicker, there's not a really easy way to count.
Well, parks is different than when you're looking at playgrounds, and this is specific to playgrounds here. And the reason I ask is I drive by Big Rock, like multiple times in any given day. There's never anybody there, and I'm just kind of curious how that frames up when we're talking about may or may not include a play structure to something like E-Bright, which you can't go there and like get a swing because there's always kids there. So I'm just curious, you know, when we're looking at this, and I realize that I'm asking a question that's outside of evaluating a property specifically, but because it was in here, my thought turned to Big Rock, which is a very different type of kind of playground-esque park that we have in our city versus something like E-Bright or Billings or Lower Commons.
This is a good topic to take up as part of the pro plan, I would recommend.
Yeah, the pro plan will do, you know, an inventory analysis of existing facilities and then where things might be, there might be a gap in them. So I would refer this off to the pro plan and study it more in there.
Okay.
Okay, Tom?
As long as we're on this topic, one thing I'd like to see as part of the pro plan exercise is a bit of analysis on who's actually using which parks. Are they local people? Are they coming from outside the city? What is the story here? I know that, for instance, at Pine Lake Park, an awful lot of the fishing activity is by people who are coming from well outside of Samamish. If we have a lot of people that are using the major parks who were not resident here, to me, that's information I'd like to have, and it could influence what kind of park that I would like to build in the future.
I guess one comment I could make on that is that I was down at Lake Samamish Park, opening up the new waterfront there and talking with the director down there, and she said how many, I forgot what the percentage was, how many of the users of the area down there are from Samamish. So our citizens go to other parks also, although, of course, that's a state park.
Yeah, I could say they're paying for that, no? I'm not saying we don't let them use it, I'm just saying I'd like to know a little bit more about what the market demand really is. is.
We did some work a few years ago with volunteers, collecting some data. So there's probably ability to, to get some limited data as part of the pro-plan.
Okay, carry on.
Okay, the last category is preservation. The areas of use that we were considering as examples, purposes for preservation, might be preserving tree canopy, linking streams, fish and/or wildlife habitat corridors, or, as we talked about, possibly just habitat, preserving wetland-sensitive areas with ecological benefits. So criteria here, some similarities adjacent to existing open space. What's that?
What are you doing with that?
I'm destroying the ecological value of the park.
Yeah.
Am I supposed to carry that thing, Hank? Another one is undeveloped and of high ecological value. It can connect to or more existing disconnected preservation use open spaces. It's within walking distance of neighborhoods, has existing mature contiguous tree canopy. This one would be interesting if there's any comment on this. Primarily forested with coniferous trees. Forested with diverse natural features, so that could be topography or other elements. Trees are free of diseases and pests. Will preserve existing neighborhood character, so that might be very specific to that neighborhood of the city. Adjacent to or includes an existing stream or wildlife corridor. So basically, it's kind of giving extra points if it happens to be doing that as well. Provides or significantly contributes to missing link in a desirable stream or habitat corridor. Has a wetland on site. Contains steep slope areas. Rights can be acquired below market value and acquisition aligns with grant funding criteria. So again, it's, you know, the more of these it hits, the more points it scores. You know, on some of these ones here, has a wetland on site or contains steep slope areas, you know, there's some different philosophies about that, because there's elements of your code that actually already preserve some of those areas and make it very difficult to develop them. So should, should the city be spending dollars on specifically owning rights to those? Maybe in some cases to provide access. Maybe it's to create a trail connection through a steep slope area. Maybe it's to get to a point where you can view the wetland because of its aesthetic. So there might, we're, we're assuming there's some reasons to, to acquire some of these, and if so, it would score more points.
Good. Tom, do you have a?
On this issue, we haven't talked about it, but it's in the background. There are a number of tools in the box besides dollars. We could use conservation easements, we could use donations, you know, death trust, this type of thing. So I think there are a number of things that could be brought to play here to leverage the $13 million budget.
Absolutely. I think this category lends itself really well to being a less costly, creating a lot of value approach to accomplishing a lot, really, so.
The fourth bullet, which says the properties within walking distance of residential neighborhoods. I can't think of any property in the city that's not within walking distance of a residential neighborhood.
Some neighborhood, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, what's the definition of that? Is it a certain amount of residents within a certain distance?
Right.
That's a very, that's a good, good comment.
Actually, Don, that would disqualify the Emerald Necklace.
Yeah. Well, no.
It would.
Just 28-mile walk, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on this ranking? These are really good, well-thought-out criteria. A lot of work was done and input from the public. Are you through with your presentation?
You can probably just go through them.
Or have you just started?
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few other slides, but I'll just quickly go through it. This, this goes to some of what you were discussing earlier. The city may have other reasons to acquire property for city functions or operations. Acquisition for those other needs are assumed to be based on entirely different criteria.
Good.
I think the TMP, the Parks Pro-Plan, will help identify what these are. And at that point, they'll probably be a whole lot more site-specific than what we've been talking about here.
Kathy?
I'm going to go back and be a nuisance and bring the question up again, and this is going to be directed to Jesse as the deputy city manager, because, primarily because we haven't, and I don't see anything on the schedule, to talk about the town center plan, and we each have different, had different meetings, and we haven't been able to come together to talk about what we heard and share what we heard, other than on sort of an ad hoc basis. And I did talk with Deputy Mayor Keller on this one particular issue, but Tom and I were the only ones in that particular meeting, and Snook Kelly was here also, and he talked about they're doing their planning for the town center. They're making the assumption that there's a certain level of walkability, and they're planning their parking around that assumption. And it just, this silly little trail on 218th that may or may not connect and may force people to walk an extra mile if we don't have that kind of connection, I would like to understand how we're going to look at the town center plan to ensure that we're providing the, the information and doing it in a perhaps timely fashion. I'm not sure that that conversation belongs in the parks plan at this point in time, because they're moving forward and doing plans, and they're, with all of the building, and Kristy knows this as well, these, so many of these properties on the western edge of the town center are being developed, and we're losing those trails, that we may, if we take too long of a period of time to figure this out, we may lose some of those little tiny trail connections that will allow people to walk a quarter of a mile rather than a mile and a half, and will, which would deter them from walking to the town center. And it's a concern to me, enough of a concern, that I'm, you know, how do we support that economic viability? So that's why I was asking, does that look, that kind of generic overlook of the town center, looking at how people walk to it from the north, from the east, from the south, and from the west, and are there some things that we could do now or even, or in the future?
Sure.
Rather than waiting for it to go through a land acquisition plan and maybe pick up a trail or two or save a trail or two?
Jesse?
Short-term, long-term response. In the short term, and this has been going on for, I want to say, two to three years now, we have a team assembled that when developments come in, whether it's town center or another development, we are screening for trail connectivity and either requiring an easement or a trail to be connected. So that is actively happening. In some cases, the trail has to be relocated within, in the property. We're making adjustments, but we have parks and community development and public works all involved in reviewing development as they come in. Longer term, town center, it's here, it's moving forward. We have a team, again, community development, parks, public works, all actively working on connections and to get into the weeds a little bit. The Lower Commons has to be remaster planned, if you will, to, to, to make some modifications to work with the town center. So that is actively happening. As much as you're meeting with the STCA folks, we're meeting with them probably tenfold.
I'm sure you will.
Longer term, and this is a decision we made with the trails plan, the problem with our existing trails plan is it was done before the town center plan was adopted.
Sure.
So our philosophy was the town center needs to be the hub and spoke of our trail system, but if you look at our current trails plan, it doesn't even make sense. The town center didn't exist. We made a decision last year as part of the budget process to take recreational trails and connectivity, so anything that's not in the right of way, and move that into the parks plan for analysis, and connectivity through right-of-way into the transportation plan. And these two plans are going to intersect, and we are going to pick up the long-term planning for connections to and from the town center. But we have kind of a belt and suspenders approach right now, so that we're not missing or losing those connections.
Okay, then can you get me an answer as to whether that trail?
I have an email right here from Angie.
Right, because those two developments at that corner have already been approved and are designed. But I can't tell if that trail is going to be connected.
But we can't solve that right now.
No, I just am requesting an answer.
Okay, good. Tom?
Don, just a general comment. The exercise we went through in the Transportation Committee dealing with Southeast Fourth, which is the core of the town center, showed a number of things we need to look at. The walkability issue got a lot of our attention, particularly within the town center proper, but also it was the access to the town center area from other parts of Samamish. We identified serious deficiencies on Southeast Eighth as an example, between 218th and 212th. We also identified 218 slash 216 as an area that needs a little bit more work, too. And I'm sure that as we get into the detail of the development of the northern part of town center, we'll want to have some way of getting down between 218th and 228th, either as part of a roadway or as a separate unique path of some sort.
So basically, we should schedule a town center discussion time for all these projects or concepts. Okay. But not right now.
Nope.
Okay, Kristy?
I'll go on here. Sorry, Jesse. So do we know when that discussion is? Because Tom Odell and I sat in on the same TMP meeting as well, and, and I was talking specifically about 218th. And I am seeing, because I travel that way all the time, I'm seeing a lot more people out walking. Great thing. On that street, bad thing.
Yep.
That is a, there's, the sightlines are terrible there, and I'm constantly seeing vehicles having, there's no shoulder. The growth has come over the white line in some places, both on the ground and then blackberry bushes, whatever is growing there. The cars are going over the, the W L line to avoid pedestrians and cyclists, and there's going to be an accident there at some point. And I think as far as looking at, you know, we had a first look at the, the TIP, but things like this and town center and how rapidly town center is, is developing and the more people that want to walk there, which is great, we may need to readdress the priorities within the TIP to, to look at an eye for town center.
Good.
Agreed. I was just pulling up your TIP to take a, a quick scan. We are in the early stages of town center development. The meetings you've had with STCA, we've not even moved out of pre-op stage yet, so we are still working on infrastructure location and connectivity. The areas adjacent to town center, we will need to pick up as part of your transportation master plan. I think one of the big things we're hearing and themes from both parks and public works, public process is sidewalks and walkability in this entire city, not just to and from the town center. And we're going to have to look at how we prioritize those sidewalk projects and then how we fund them. So that's coming in the longer-term discussion, and, and town center will be certainly a priority, as I'm hearing.
Right, 218th and Southeast Eighth.
Yep.
Which is going to get rid of some beautiful trees. Okay, how are we doing on our?
We're almost there.
Okay.
We, we just wanted to summarize some key points from the Parks Commission meeting last week where the same information was presented and we received some feedback. Summary of that is that all in all, when, when the, I believe the money is spent, the, the thought of the Parks Commission was that the acquisition should be reflective of the priorities set by the community and the process. And we're trying to also define the criteria in that manner. Properties with mature native trees, landmark or heritage trees should be considered in addition to those forested with coniferous trees. And this was a reaction to a criteria that specifically was giving points if it was coniferous tree canopy. Next one was a suggestion to rename criteria to guidelines to be less restrictive. And the last was, might be worth setting a timeline to revisit the policy in the future.
So is the cottonwood native to the northwest?
Black cottonwood, yeah.
I was afraid of that.
Nice good point.
Okay. Last thing we were going to mention was a follow-on topic. It's actually not part of OTAC scope at this point, but it's something we heard quite a bit in our focus groups and public meetings, was trying to be more proactive, the city reaching out to the community and educating the community, because there are people out there that are very much aligned with the community and its desire to preserve the character, but may also happen to be at a point where they're considering a sale of their property. And quite honestly, they'd much rather sell to the city than to a developer. And so trying to provide some education pieces of the benefits of why selling to the city over a developer, what would those be? Also, maybe some of those benefits are tax-related and, and financial in their orientation. And so this was just simply putting out in front of you that, another thing that we heard that could advance this whole strategy to the next stage.
I think Kathy and I remember Beaver Lake Preserve, how
Yes.
that 50 some acres was acquired for no cost to the city.
Exactly.
And lastly, just wanted to let you know, there is a public meeting tomorrow, part of the, the market. There's a booth being set up from four to eight o'clock, and we'll have information on all of this provided, so that anyone coming up, we can get additional feedback from the public. And then lastly, the intent is to come back to you with kind of a holistic strategy and plan on July 11th and, and follow-up on July 18th. And as part of that, we're intending to also share this initial list of potential properties for discussion purposes.
Good.
Confidentially.
Good. Great. Good, good conversation, good comments back. Thank you all, and thank you Cheryl and Hank for listening to us.
Question of staff, Don? Jesse, once we agree on what this thing finally looks like, how quickly do we push the go button?
Well, as Chad just mentioned, we have an initial list of properties we'd like to put in front of you at an executive session the last, I think it's July 18th. We're trying to, trying to make sure we have time, and what we're looking for from you at that time is direction to proceed on further analysis. So maybe by the time we come back in September, if there's a really hot opportunity, maybe if there's a hot opportunity in July, we might be looking for some direction. But we anticipate this being a little more active process, so that we can probably be talking about this at least monthly in executive session, I would anticipate.
Perhaps you also need to give us some thought to how we might handle near-term opportunities that may not last that come up during the recess for the council.
Fair enough. If we have any red flag properties, we will certainly bring those to your attention.
Any chance we could look at that a little sooner so that we can, as we're out and about, and see properties that we may not be inundating you with emails that, gosh, I saw this property added to your list and it's already there?
If we have something preliminary, we could potentially do that. I will point out, we're still working through the list of 100 potential properties that came in.
Oh, my, that's a long list.
And those were properties that were sponsored, you know, through the, the process.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minute break? Okay. Okay. I think we're ready to get started here. The last discussion item The last discussion item...
And that are interesting.
We're starting, please.
We're having conversation already.
I know. Council Candidate Forum discussion. And we have 12 candidates for the four positions. Three of them are contested in the primary, and the primary, the ballots will be out around the 16th or 17th of July. And the question is whether the city should help facilitate a candidate forum by providing the facilities here and perhaps the recording and then the replaying on Channel 21 and on the website. So I'm open for, I see, it looks like Tom Odell first has a comment.
Yeah. The biggest candidate for this is actually Mike. I guess I should turn on the mic. I've got a lot of input on this issue from my wife, who says, who are these people? How are we going to know what their positions are, where they stand? And why are they running? The more people I talk to, the more I get that reaction. I know there's been a lot of angst in the past about the way some of the candidate forums occurred. Frankly, when I ran, I went through three of them, and I thought it was a good thing to do. We had different audiences for each of them. And I like to think I got a little better as I went along, too. But from the standpoint of letting the voters of Semenish know what these people are all about, I think it's essential that we provide an equal opportunity for all of them to stand up and make their case and let the chips fall as they may then.
Okay, Kristi?
My two thoughts.
Yeah, I won't, I won't take too much time at this. I certainly support the city providing the venue and re-airing. Just, I stand firm in my thought that the more people can hear from the candidates, the better informed our public is, and then they can cast their votes as such.
Tom?
I think it's a great idea. I think that, as I say often, the devil's in the detail. There's some things that we need to get to in the specifics. For one, and I'll just throw this one out, I got a few more that, when we get into the specifics later on, we can talk about that. But the proposal that was, the current policy is no sooner than 45 days. We're there.
Right.
For the primaries.
Yeah.
And we can't adopt anything tonight. We don't have another meeting until the 27th, I think, right? So we're going to be within 30 days if we're going to do this prior to the primary. I'll throw out the idea, do we do it for the primary and not do another one? Or do we wait until after the primary and find out who the two are for each of the seats? I don't have an answer for that. It's open for discussion in my mind, but I don't know logistically what the plan would be, and we're up against time constraints already.
Right. Well, for one thing, we as a council can change the 45 days.
Well, it's no sooner, so we're not, that'd be today.
Yeah, that's our prerogative to remove that from our policy.
But my point is, we're not, we can't adopt a resolution.
No, I understand, understand. And we don't, we don't have...
And a proposal, yeah.
A proposal before us. But if we discuss today and say that we have a consensus that we feel the city should provide the facilities and the recording and be willing to play it back numerous times on Channel 21 and have it on the website, I think if we say that today, we might get some organization willing to step forward and say, we will, we will run one.
And what you just said, I'm fully supportive of.
Okay.
We give the venue, we do the recording, we do the playback, but we do not participate as city.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, Kathy?
I too am very supportive, but I do have a couple of questions. Because I think that if we could indicate, at least at this point, that we are interested in doing that, but it would be nice to have some dates. I know there's a group coming to talk to Rotary on Thursday about you guys...
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
See. If you didn't know that, you know now. But they are actually planning on a presentation, or doing a forum on July 23rd.
Right.
And we talked a little bit about that. So whether, if we gave them a date that they could do it here, maybe they would shift the date, or maybe even use that date and do it here as opposed to the library where they were talking about it.
We have to check what nights would be possible here, and we have a list, is July 7th, July, that's a Friday, Monday, July 10th, Wednesday, July 12th, Thursday, July 13th.
I don't think we can, anybody could do it in that...
Monday, July 17th, Wednesday, July 19th, Friday, July 21st.
Okay, my question to you is, will we only allow one group, one time for the primary and one time for the general? Or I'm hearing of a number of groups that are talking about it, would we do more than one group?
Well, that's a good question. I think that we would hope that the groups would work together and do one primary and one for general, but I think the general, we can, we can deal with further, further along. Right now, we're trying to facilitate...
I'm very supportive of it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we get that question out there and that we get that answered, because if it's just one group, then we have to encourage them to work together as opposed to three or four groups coming in with different sets of questions. There might be an environmental group, there might be somebody focused on land acquisition, there might be somebody focused on some other topics that may choose...
Don't give them all those ideas.
What I'm hearing, the community already...
Yeah.
Well, can I weigh in?
Sure.
There's another question in there in that regard. Now I just slipped my mind what it is, but I mean...
He forgot he didn't push his button.
Yeah, exactly. I'll come, I'll come back to it, I'm sorry.
Okay, looks like Tom...
Oh, I know what it is. It's whether or not we replay if they do it somewhere else. If they do a forum outside of here, would we replay it then?
Yes, if an outside group records.
Would you say yes?
Not if we do it.
I would if it's unedited. But you don't want somebody to edit a tape and then have us replaying.
No, that's right.
There has to be some strict guidelines surrounding someone else doing the videotaping and us replaying.
And how do we guarantee that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Go to the...
But I think it's worthwhile, talking through.
Okay, To.
Well, first of all, I think we need to do this for both the primary and the general.
Okay.
Because I'm very interested in making sure that everyone has as much information as possible going into the primary, so they do make intelligent choices.
Do we all agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Secondly, as far as taping it here, I think that is good. If it was taped off-site, I would be a little concerned about two things. One is the potential for editing before we get our hands on it. Number two is, are some of the questions, are all the questions going to be appropriate?
We shouldn't be weighing in on the questions.
We should not be weighing in on the questions, but well, okay.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. Bob?
Thank you. Okay, so having some experience doing this before, you know, one of the issues that I ran into was not all the candidates could participate on the date. And so, you know, what happens? Do we, do we go forward if they, if a group comes in and says, well, we got 11, 11 of the candidates can make it, and the other two are protesting, the two that...
One other.
The one other that, you know, that couldn't show up. Do we, do we, do we play it or not? You know, is that exposing the city to any problems? That's, the questions are one thing, that's a whole, I think by us not being involved with it, we're okay. The only issue I would have is if we are running something on Channel 21 and not all the candidates...
Well, I think if, if a group came to us and said, we have all 12 candidates that are willing to participate on a certain date, one of them says he can't be there, but he would have a representative to take his place. And then if they drop out before, that's, that's tough. We've made it available. I think that that's sufficient in my mind.
It is in mine. I like the Issaquah, the way the Issaquah committee does it. But if we are only going to allow one pre-primary and one gen, pre-general, I would suggest that if there are other groups that are going to hold forums in other locations, that we take under serious consideration, asking them to tape it if they choose to, and then we can run that on Channel 21, because it may give a different perspective.
Yeah.
After all, if you have 12 people, there are only going to be so much time to get information out, and it's not going to be very robust.
Mm-hmm.
If we had 12 people, each give a five-minute statement, that's one hour.
Yeah. Well, it's up to the organizing committee. If they want to make it a two-hour one, we can run the tape on...
Yeah.
But one way around the issue of can everyone be in the same room at the same time is to have prerecorded statements.
Yeah, Jessie, didn't the city attorney weigh in on that?
Yes.
Attendance or prerecorded statements?
Oh, prerecorded statements, yeah. Advised against.
Advised against?
Ah, okay.
Did he advise against their choice prerecorded statements? Or if the group wanted to give that, the candidates, three questions, and they prerecorded their answers to those three questions, that that would be acceptable?
Advised against the city participating and facilitating this...
I didn't say the city, I said just showing it on Channel 21.
Just participate.
That specific question.
Yeah. Because if we're going to show it on Channel 21 for one group...
Yeah. I think for the primary, we'd be lucky to find one group that's willing to step forward and do it in a timely fashion. But after that, we should talk about whether we allow more than one group for the general election.
Because you can see people coming at it from different points of view.
Sure. Kristi, more input?
Yeah, just on the attendance element of it, I think, you know, from what I've seen, our candidates are all very active and involved. I think they'll all cut out the time to be here, and if someone can't be here, I'm supportive of having a representative sent on their behalf. I think it's important enough that we need to hold this so that people can hear, and I think, you know, they need to cut out the time to be here. And I think they will, because I think they want people, frankly, to hear from them.
Yeah, but there are always issues that they may not be able to. So I do like the idea of having them...
True enough, but I think, you know, we've, we've got several dates here, and hopefully any organization that's willing to pick this up will work briskly. The other thing I wanted to talk about is if there are other organizations out there that end up hosting forums, which, you know, I can hope that they will, while we may not have control over the video, you know, those organizations have the ability to upload those to YouTube and post them to social media, where people can see them there as well. And frankly, there's probably more eyes on social media than there are on Channel 21.
Right.
So I would encourage the city, if we record this, to post it to our YouTube channel, and then that could go out on social media, too, for a broader audience.
Good. Okay.
I just wanted to make one quick comment.
Go ahead.
You know, having a representative, I don't think that's our call then, if we are really just providing the facility. That really would be the organization that was representing for them to make that organizational. But I have to add, I'm uncomfortable with somebody sending a representative. I'm not sure it's fair to the opponent when, when somebody sends a representative for them. I think that they could maybe prerecord an opening statement then that would be played at the time that everybody else is doing it. But I don't know that it's fair that you take a candidate, put him in a spot where he has to answer on the fly against somebody that's been selected to represent another candidate. I'm not sure that's a good reflection. That's a comment for the group that would host, not for us.
Yeah, I was going to say, we may be wandering too far into the weeds on this one.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we've got a consensus to support as much as we can.
In some way.
Venue and recording.
We provide the venue, the recording, and at least Channel 21 for the five people that watch it on Channel 21. And then YouTube maybe for the hundreds of thousands that watch it there. And we're giving these dates, and I'll repeat them again, July 10th, 12th, 13th, 17th, 19th, and 21st. We had four more, but they're really too late for the primary.
Could you read that again, please?
10th, 12th, 13th, 17th, 19th, 21st. And we had 26, 27, 28, and 31, but I think that would be too late.
I agree.
The old policy was a minimum of 14 days prior.
Right.
August 1st would be July 15th, 16th.
Yeah. So, so we have to change that policy of how far prior.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's if we want to change the policy. I would argue that if ballots are out before the candidate forum takes place, that may be a disadvantage, too, potentially.
A little, but it doesn't mean people have made up their mind already with a...
Well, and if they know it's coming, they may wait.
This is true. That's if we do a very good job of making sure that they know.
It's just a clarification.
Sure.
When we met in the mayor's meeting yesterday, we talked about recording the event, but we did not talk about broadcasting.
Live, you mean?
There's a difference, live broadcasting versus recording.
I don't think we should broadcast live, that costs us more money, right?
Shouldn't we?
We'll tape it and then...
Replay.
Replay.
Jessie, is there, would you ask Mike if there's a difference if we replay it on Channel 21 versus YouTube?
My understanding, I'm probably not totally...
I was trying to parse out what he was actually trying to...
Well, I think we're taking all of our recordings now and formatting them to YouTube, so we may not be the folks that grab it and promote it on social media, but I think that is the format. I need to double-check on that, though.
Okay.
And there's another question, I think, inherent. Do we have to have the consent of all the candidates? Can one of them say no, and then that shoots it in the foot for everybody?
That's a good question, Tom.
That came up last time.
It's inherent in here.
It is, it's inherent.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping that they do a doodle poll, and I suppose if you're a candidate and decide not to, it certainly will get out that, well, he, he or she spoiled it for everybody else. That wouldn't be good for their campaign.
Well, and I guess I got to ask a legal question. Do we want to participate if that person decides not to?
So ask Mike that, huh?
I did. Low-hanging fruit, everyone's invited, they have the choice to attend. But your, your criteria, if we're going to offer the venues, everyone's invited, next step up, everyone has to commit to attending. He advised against something that would require everyone to attend, because in the event, somebody has a last-minute emergency and they can't make it, then you've, so...
So he's saying it's legally okay for us to have the criteria, everybody's invited?
Yes, he did tell me condition, you know, again, low-hanging fruit is just everyone is invited.
I'm good with that.
Which seems reasonable. If you wanted to take it a step further, you could require that everyone commits to participate.
Not to attend, that's information, too.
Well, somebody could have something else, you know.
Everyone must be invited. Okay. Well, I think we've covered the criteria, and now we can tell any group that's interested. And if there are more than one group, we would...
That's what I was going to ask, what will be our process?
Are we going to...
RFP.
Or hope they...
Raffle it off?
It's an RFP.
If there's more than one group, then I really think we ought to consider that.
May I observe you have a council meeting on June 27th? Perhaps if we could get the word out that we need to have anyone interested in hosting, let us know, the city manager's office, by June 23rd, so that we could take this up on June 27th?
What does it mean to host?
Facility.
Well, that's, we're, we're hosting.
Oh, I'm sorry, host.
Probably the one who obtains the, whoever is going to moderate, I would...
I think that's, I mean, there's no fees that this organization would have to pay as in...
He's responsible for the moderator creating questions.
There's, there's no longer a rental fee for City Hall, because we've discontinued renting. So I did ask the attorney, the policy says you have to pay... So I, I did ask the attorney, the policy says you have to pay for the, he said, you're probably waiving the fee then at that point, there's no fee.
So what, I go back to my question, what does it mean for an organi, we're going to get, I don't want to say hundreds. Quite a few people or organizations say, yeah, I'll sponsor, it doesn't cost me anything. I want to get in there and ask my questions. I wish you hadn't asked that question. Sorry.
No, but it's, it's a good question because you want to have a fair moderator, somebody that's impartial and maybe that, I would suggest someone that doesn't live here in Sammamish. I can't say that, but that would be my suggestion.
Well, it's up to the organization that, we stop.
But how do you decide on the organization or organizations?
What I wanted to say is that if you look at the ISACWA, the way they do it, they don't necessarily need a moderator if you ask a question ahead of time and they just come in and read their response.
I don't like pre-recorded.
I don't like that, but it's, we're not the organization that's renting the building. We're not determining unless we choose to, whatever their format is.
Well, to be fair, ISACWA does it both ways. They have a forum and they have a prerecorded.
Right.
So in a forum, they, they had the ISACWA press be the moderator, which is neutral.
Yes, Debbie always did our moderating, too.
Yeah. But do we need a sponsor?
For, maybe just for marketing purposes themselves, because they would be the ones responsible for letting the public know, right? I mean, we would do, push it, I guess, as well out.
Well, somebody's got to generate the questions and how, the format of the itself. That should be part of the process of any organizations that want to sponsor it. They should also include, you know, maybe who their moderator will be and how they're going to come up with their questions and the format as part of the process to say, okay, well, this is probably the best.
Can we do that if we're just throwing it open?
I don't know.
Can we decide on who's going to do it?
I was wondering about that.
If we go above, if we go above the low-hanging fruit, where we said everybody must be invited, if we go to the next level where everybody must agree to it, then basically the candidates will have to agree upon who's running the forum, you see?
Then you may not get any.
Which would be unfortunate.
You wouldn't be able to get all the candidates to agree on one?
Which is probably a likely scenario.
Okay, so how do we filter out if, if everybody's invited, anybody can invite the 12?
When we know it should be, if we're looking at some criteria of applying for the group to apply to use the facility, neutral moderator? A neutral moderator, I don't know how we evaluate that, but a neutral moderator and could, it has to be a group that is based in the city of Sammamish?
No.
No, I wouldn't do that.
That would, that would probably apply bias, wouldn't it?
Maybe that's why we didn't host forums.
And somebody from the League of Women Voters or from AAUW or some other neutral organization? Because Denise Smith did, did moderate for us, she was a president of the AAUW.
Well, you're talking about the group itself, not the moderator.
I've been talking about moderator needs to be neutral and somebody like that, I know.
I thought you said in Sammamish.
No, what I meant was the sponsor then, the group that's sponsoring, that's organizing it, that they, they would be from Sammamish, not the moderator. The moderator, I think, out of Sammamish would probably be.
I can't imagine anybody outside of Sammamish is going to host our forum.
What if the ISACWA Sammamish reporter wanted to do it?
They could, they could be the moderator.
Well, they, they wanted to run it.
And sponsor.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have control over.
But they're not in the city.
Maybe the chamber will.
No, then that's a problem, that's a qualifier that, that doesn't work.
May I just recap what you've said? I've been taking notes. You've built sort of a framework, written proposals, I'm retracting the date I gave you, due June 22nd, impartial moderator, everyone's invited. To, Christie said, we need to know how questions will be developed and what the format of the forum will be, what the proposed format is.
Oh, good.
That would give you enough.
And then who makes the decision of which group to pick?
That would have to be the, the city council, not the staff.
We can make that decision.
Right.
Okay, at the 27th?
And I will confirm that with Mike, that we're not getting out ahead of ourselves here.
So, John, for example, we might have the chamber, may want to do that. Theirs would be more business-related. We might have another organization that's same, more environmental, somebody else that's concerned about land use. So we may have several groups, we may not be able to encourage them to go together because if you think about those, those three different topics, to try to get 12 people to answer questions from those three aspects would be very, quite time consuming.
The last guy gives the best answer.
We're setting the framework, too, though, for the general election. And I think we may see more of those forums come out with different, you know, interests, you know, whether it's, you know, from the chamber or from, you know, an environmental group. Would be hopeful we could get at least one for the primary, just because there are so many. But I think, you know, it's been said before, you know, three questions for, you know, all the candidates and basically done.
Well, I know there's one group that's preserved the library on July 23rd, so they're obviously not going to be able to move theirs from the library to here because that's a Sunday.
Well, that's true.
If they've already invited the candidates.
Sure. Well, I mean, it's not that there couldn't be more than one.
That group did reach out to us about the availability of council chambers. And we explained it was not available. It's a process that you have to facilitate, you're doing now, so we could reach out to them, find out if they're interested.
Who did that?
The, the group that's hosting at the library.
Oh, the Platopians, or, no, it's not, it's the Women's Huddle or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Why don't we do this? I would feel most comfortable speaking with our attorney tomorrow and getting his blessing on the council selecting a group to, to come and do the forum and going over some of the criteria, and then I can follow up in writing with all of you tomorrow.
Okay. And then put it on our website?
Yeah, this is due to us as well, so I've just, I want to make sure we're.
Would the RFP, for lack of better words, include the topics that would be questioned, that would be asked?
I'm going to think that the attorney would not support that.
Okay. I would agree with that, but I'm trying to figure out how we decide then.
I think, well, I'm hoping that the information that will be given from whatever the organization is would give us an inkling as to whether or not they were going to hone in on one specific topic. I would hope it would be a little bit more broad.
Right.
For the primary, at least.
But if they submit their, their criteria of how they're going to generate their questions would probably lead us to.
Ask, ask our city attorney, we'll figure it out, I guess.
Okay, well, good. I think we have really a consensus in general.
Now, Bob said this would take just a couple of minutes. This would be a really short conversation, so I just, just want to let you know how wrong he is.
There are no short conversations.
Are there any other issues? Jesse, are we done?
We're done.
Okay, we are adjourned.